Good morning. Let's get started. This is our city council meeting for the city of Oklahoma City. For our younger viewers, Oklahoma City is the 22nd largest city in the United States. It's a great place to work, it's a great place to live, and it's a great place to raise your kids. With that, I'll first turn it over for an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation will first be from Chris Dodson. He's the pastor of First Church, Oklahoma City. The interesting thing about his church, it was formed six days after the land run on April 28, 1889. We will then be followed by Sammy Blacy and Lucy Herndon from Troop 177, which will pledge, give us the pledge of allegiance. And I'm happy to say that Troop 177 is from Ward 8, and they meet at Church of the Servant. And we're so glad you're here today. Thank you.
All right, let's bow together. Let's bow together. God, we thank you so much. As we're still settling in here this morning, you have already met us in this place. We just come to you so thankful for your blessings, for this great city, for these servants who are doing everything they can to continue to catch your game plan and to help lead us forward. God, I just lift up to you the agenda and the work that's been put into today, that you may bless it, that our hearts may beat with yours, our ears and our eyes may catch your vision for Oklahoma City. And so, God, we just thank you that you meet us in this place. We lift this to you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are on page one of the agenda. We're at item number three, which is the, from the office of the mayor. I can report to you that we have nothing from the office of the mayor today, other than the mayor's out of town. We next go to item number four, which is items from council. Today, we're, we have a wonderful resolution honoring women of the Oklahoma City Municipal Government in recognition of Women's History Month. This is something that's sponsored by council members Young, Hammond, and Nice. And I'm going to have all three of them speak, but I'll first turn it over to council member Young.
Good morning. Thank you, Vice Mayor. If you wouldn't mind, if we could have the city clerk read the resolution to begin with, is that fine to do that?
Yes. Are you ready, Amy?
Whereas Women's History Month, celebrated nationally in the month of March, highlights the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women around the world, and marks a call to action for accelerating women's equity. And whereas the theme for Women's History Month 2022, Providing Healing, Promoting Hope, is intended to pay tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during the ongoing pandemic, and to recognize all the thousands of ways women of all cultures have provided healing and hope throughout history. And whereas Oklahoma City recognizes all the cultures and diversity of women who left their imprint on the great progression of the city, all significant irrespective of position or impact. And whereas historic and honorable mentions of impactful women of Oklahoma City government include our first female council member and first female mayor of a large city, Patience Lading; the first Black councilwoman, Willa Johnson; other outstanding women elected to serve the city of Oklahoma City and its residents include Margie Feeney, Ward 2; Jackie Carey, Ward 8; Beverly Hodges, Ward 6; Amy Underwood Brooks, Ward 2; Frances Lowry, Ward 4; Anne Simank, Ward 6; Meg Salyer, Ward 6; Nikki Nice, Ward 7; JoBeth Hammond, Ward 6; and Barbara Young, Ward 3. Ward 6 has the distinction of being represented by a female since 1987. And whereas the positions of city manager, city auditor, and municipal judge are appointed by the mayor and city council, females serving in these positions include the first and only female city manager, Paula Hearn; the first female city auditor, Susan Nicewander, who was followed by Susan McNit City; and female municipal judges include Terri Pendle, Emma K. Lonian; Paige Morgan; Twyla Mason Gray; and current presiding judge, Philippa James. And whereas countless other women have served to better the city of Oklahoma City through their hard work and dedication, and whereas Councilwoman Hammond, Councilwoman Nice, and Councilwoman Young acknowledge the contributions and impact of all women who have served and worked in municipal government. And whereas Oklahoma City acknowledges the important work done locally to support female-led businesses and community organizations, from more equitable access to funding to ensuring the voices of women are heard from higher positions of power and influence. And whereas Oklahoma City continues to be committed to identifying and increasing the visibility of women's achievements, helping forge equality and accelerating gender parity throughout our community and city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City, that they in recognition of March being Women's History Month, do hereby honor and value the many contributions women have made throughout history, and commit to continue supporting efforts to improve opportunities for all women.
Thank you. One of the things that is so valuable and precious to us today is the fact that we have three former council members who have been able to join us this morning, and we would just like to recognize them. Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd like to take the resolution in yourself and have the former council members step up and get one more photo with them before we wrap up. But that is Councilwoman, Councilwoman Marge Feeney, who served in Ward 2, being elected in October of 1980, and serving through 1987. Councilwoman Beverly Hodges, serving in Ward 6, from 1987 to 1995, and later going on to serve as a county commissioner from 1998 to 2006. Councilwoman Meg Salyer, Ward 6, from 2008 to 2019. So, we want to thank you all very much for your service. We want to thank you so much for being able to join us this morning and just being able to recognize you and the, being able to walk in your footsteps behind you and continue to build on the things that you started in our city and the wonderful growth that we've seen in the time that you've served. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, if we could...
Let's first give them a big hand.
Yes. And then, before I turn it over to Councilwoman Hammond and Nice, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Amy, and we want to recognize you as well for this Women's History Month, and so we just thank you for all that you do for the city.
I just wanted to say that this is a memorable month in understanding and acknowledging women and their contributions. And I know we have three of, three of our former councilwomen who are here, but I'd be remiss if we did not recognize the others that I know are unable to be with us, including my former councilmember and my former county commissioner, Willa Johnson, and her contributions to break the glass ceiling for women like me to be in this position. And that is something that I will always cherish and honor, especially understanding and meeting and talking to her during the time that I was running for office and after I was elected, when she would also listen to the things that I would tell her and help me to understand what some of my best options were, being in this space. So, it's good to have people that you can talk to that have been in these, in these places, that can guide you with their wisdom. So, I do want to make sure I acknowledge her for her work in, again, representing women of color in these spaces and for our city, serving from 1993 until 2010, and then from, serving from the county commissioner from 2010 until 2018. Her work will always be remembered, and we are honored, again, to recognize the fact that the Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center will be opening this time next year. So, that's the exciting piece of being able to speak her name. We also have something that will honor her in the service that she had for our city. And that endowment fund that we placed in effect for our young people to be able to enjoy this center has been fulfilled with that $50,000 donations from everyone around the city and across the country, and for the Oklahoma City Community Foundation to match that same $50,000 donation. We are extremely excited about how we will honor Ms. Willa D. Johnson and her legacy for our city. So, I also want to thank the women that work for our city government, because I know it's not the easiest job for us to serve, to be mothers, to be sisters, to be aunts, to be grandparents, and to also serve our city. So, I just wanted to take the time to say thank you. Your work is not forgotten, and we appreciate the journey that you have taken to serve and represent our city. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to add, you know, I think part of why resolutions like this can be so important is recognizing all of the really positive contributions that people from different experiences and different backgrounds can bring to a community. And I think, you know, I'd be, I'd be remiss to not mention that, you know, the history of sort of women's equality has unfortunately been marred by some pretty nasty, you know, racism, classism, you know, thinking back to Susan B. Anthony wanting to win the women's vote at the expense of Black women and Black men. And so, thinking about the ways that, yes, you know, women can advance, you know, the cause of just equality and equity for everyone, there's also ways that we can sometimes maybe have our own blinders on because of our own background. And so, I think, you know, it's really important to acknowledge all the positive things that, that the experience of being a woman in the world brings to, like I said, a community, an organization, a group of people, and try to hold those things in tension, that the more we can be open to honoring, you know, the additional hurdles that someone like Willa Johnson or Nikki have experienced, to be able to bring those positive contributions need to be spoken as well, and that we need to continue to expand that, expand that space for trans women, and make sure that we're not continuing to get into rooms and then building those barriers or shutting the door behind us, but that we're continuing to, like I said, expand, expand that space, and so that we can continue to recognize those wonderful and positive things that those different perspectives bring into, into the conversation of how to, how to make a better community and a community that works for more of us. So, I appreciate all the work that Debbie and all of our other staff put into this resolution, and I'm glad that we can be looking at it with three women sitting on the council at this time. So, it's exciting to be able to hold this space for all of us and hopefully inspire some other young people to be able to see themselves in these spaces like this.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to echo Barbara's comments and tell you, city clerk Amy, that you do a great job. We appreciate your contributions and all you do for the city. And secondly, I wanted to remind everybody that Frances Kersey, your predecessor, was the first female city clerk for Oklahoma City. And so, I think we ought to remember that at this time. So, we are now ready to call this meeting to order. We're ready to have a motion and a second on this resolution, and I'll entertain that at this time, please. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. It passes. Thank you all for being here today. We're really happy to have you. We'll now move on to item four of items from council number B, which is a resolution approving city business and related travel expenses for council members Nice, Carter, and Stonecypher to attend the USS Oklahoma City SSND commissioning ceremony on May 9th through 21st, 2022. I'd entertain a motion and a second on that item at this time. We have a motion, we have, the motion is approved. I'll now go to item five, which is the city manager reports, and I'll turn it over to city manager Freeman.
Yes, we don't have any presentations on for this morning. I do want to point out, we do have the council priority update on developing a transportation system that works for all residents. There are just measures that we use to measure progress in that. Those are on there for this morning in the report. Then also, we have the sales and use tax report for March. Sales tax did drop down, I mean, dropped down to a lower level of growth. So, remember, we've had double-digit growth throughout the year so far, and it's down, it's 4.7% growth, which is still above our normal growth. Our normal growth runs somewhere around 3%, 3.25%. And so, we are still seeing good growth in use tax for the year between sales and use tax, or $28 million above target. And again, we've discussed that we'll be coming back to the council with a budget amendment to address some of those additional revenues that have been collected. And with that, that's all the information that I have on our city manager reports.
Despite sales tax being down for March, we're still up year-to-date on projections over, what is it, 13%?
Yeah, and we're 17.5% growth over last year. And sales tax for this month wasn't down, it's just a lower level of growth, so it's still 4.7% growth.
Great. Thank you. We will now go to item six on page one of the agenda, which is Journal of Council Proceedings, which I can take item A and B with one motion, please. We have a motion and a second. It passes. We're now at item seven, request for uncontested continuances, and I'll turn that over to city manager Freeman at this time, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
I like that, Mayor.
I have to be careful. On page six, page six, item 9A.M., this item is going to be stricken from the agenda. It's an engineering services contract. We need to move that. It actually needs to be in the public property authority, so we'll just bring that back at another meeting. And then on page 13, there are two zoning items that are going to be deferred. Item 11B, SPUD 1367, we'll defer that to the 12th of April. And then item C, 11C, SPUD 1375, that will also be deferred to April the 12th.
Okay.
Then on page 15, on 11N1, dilapidated structures. We just have one item on there, item B, 3401 Spring Lake Drive. We're going to strike that from the agenda. The owner has repaired. On item, on page 15, again, item 1101, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda, starting with item C, 3928 West Liberty Street. The owner has secured. Item D, 2522 North Chertel Avenue, the owner has secured. Item E, 1512 North Styles Avenue, the owner has secured. Item G, 1800 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. Item H, 1644 Northwest 15th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 3805 Northwest 25th Street, the owner has secured. Item T, 428 Southeast 48th Street, the owner has secured. Item U, 2229 Southwest 49th Street, the owner has secured. Then on page 16, item 11P1, abandoned buildings, all of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item C, 3928 West Liberty Street, the owner has secured. Item D, 3401 Spring Lake Drive, the owner has repaired. Item H, 3805 Northwest 25th Street, the owner has secured. Item M, 428 Southeast 48th Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 2229 Southwest 49th Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items I have.
And as far as those uncontested continuances, we don't need to take any action.
That's right.
Any type of motion, okay. We're now at item eight, which is revocable permits and events, and much to my surprise, there are no matters today, so we'll move on to recess the council meeting, and we'll convene as the OCMF.A. There are eight items I can take with one motion, please. That passes. We adjourn the OCMF.A. and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, which we have three items, one including the claims and payroll, and I can take that also with That also passes. We adjourn the OCPP.A. and reconvene the council meeting, where we find ourselves at the consent docket, which is item nine at page three. Are there any matters of individual consideration or individual vote that we need to take up at this time?
We do have presentations on BW and CO.
Okay, just one second. BW?
Yes, and CO. We'll have presentations on both of those.
Thank you. All right. Any individual items that need to be considered at this time?
Yes, item AK.
Just one second. AK.
Thank you.
JoBeth, do you have anything? Anybody to my right? All right. That should be easy. So, let's start with item AK.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
With this, I know we are working through this Crutcho Creek and North Midwest Boulevard as far as that bridge replacement, and it's been out for some time, and I know we've been incrementally working through the challenges and the repairs. So, I am curious to know where we are as far as, I know where we are today with this receiving the consultant review, but what, what do we have next as far as the estimated time of completion for this project? Thank you.
Vice Mayor and Council, Debbie Miller with Public Works Department. This bridge is, is going to be completely redesigned. With the approval of this item, we will start the consultant negotiations to get the final plans designed, and we plan on doing construction starting in 2023, and it'll take about a year to get done. But the plan designs are about a year also. It's about a $2 million project.
So, roughly two-year project?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we will speed this along as quickly as we can, because we know it's difficult with the bridge being closed.
All right. We have two presentations on the consent docket. The first one is found at item 9BW. We have one person that signed up to speak, which is Mark Gillette, and let's start with the presentation.
Sure. So, Joanna McSpadden is just going to review this. We had a presentation on this previously. Joanna is our Economic Development Manager, and she's just going to give us an overview of this. It was stricken from the agenda several months back, and we're bringing it back now, so I'll let Joanna give us the update.
Yeah, just as a reminder, so, the Housing Authority presented a project back in September of '21. The project is located at Northeast 28th Street and Martin Luther King. Currently, there are 159 housing units there, and they're proposing a full remodel and redevelopment of that area. The final, it's in multiple phases, but the final project would include 370 family homes, 60 senior living units, and some assisted living and memory care beds. And they're going to have commercial development along Martin Luther King as well, and some other components of the project are a community center, a family resource center, education center, and then, of course, the senior living center, so.
And then we have Mr. Gillette here to speak. Mark Gillette. For the record, could you please state your name and your home address, sir? And thank you for being here.
Sure. My name is Mark Gillette. I'm the executive director of the Oklahoma City Housing Authority. My home address is 901 Northwest 20th. I'm here this morning as the executive director, 1700 Northeast 4th Street. Just like to ask the council to, to consider this joint resolution this morning for introduction and then for a vote in two weeks, as the Oklahoma City Housing Authority begins to transform Northeast Oklahoma City, moving it towards a community where residents and businesses can be proud to call that their home.
First, first and foremost, one, I'd like to, to vote on this item separately, even today, and in two weeks, I'm going to vote on it separately again. Second, even though we definitely want the beautification for Northeast Oklahoma City, at what cost is my question when we ask for that beautification? Because my residents have been displaced, and that's what I talked about months ago about this whole project, and being able to have some time to talk to and discuss this item with HUD, and now understanding that there are also some other things that I can, I should pursue pertaining to the displacement of the residents and the conversations that were had in the process of working through this development, in the process of this development. As we looked at the planning commission meeting, and I did go over those, and I, I had to continue to look in, because I knew I wasn't, I wasn't crazy when I was, I was... to look, because I knew I wasn't, I wasn't crazy when I was, I knew what I heard, so I had to go back and think about and consider where I saw this. And I looked through the planning commission meeting, and it wasn't there. I also looked in our city council meeting from the day of May of 2019, and it wasn't there, but I found it. It was in a community meeting. We had a Ward 7 community meeting where Mr. Ian Colgan stated in that that the community, as far as this development is concerned, the plan is to build and then demolish. We didn't get that. We didn't get that. We're in the middle of a pandemic, and my residents were removed. My residents were removed, and those buildings are still there. So again, at what cost is this beautification supposed to happen for my residents? And I wanted to make sure that I played that, because I know there's, I want to make sure people see and understand what I saw and what we heard at this community meeting from someone from the Housing Authority. Please play that video.
... We want to have a series of linear parks and centralized community center spaces that offer targeted services to our residents, but also available to community at large to engage with. So you have some financial services, educational services, office learning, connections to lots of different facilities that we are trying to build and connect with our residents that surround the community they want to. The idea is we would serve here on the current vacant land and build 70, 80 units so that we can demolish some of the units over here, move them over there. Over here, we have the communities called the hub, the center of the community that has all the amenities in it. We use the geography of the hill on each degree.
I think that's going to be good, Clinton. Thank you so much. So I want to reemphasize the fact that this was a conversation in front of the community. This is not what the community received, and this is not what the community is receiving. And the fact that I'm still working with some challenges with my senior centers that are also operated by the Oklahoma City Housing Authority. I have problems with that, when I have residents calling me because of issues that they have reported over 11 times in one year. Is that fair? Absolutely not. Is this fair, what happened to my residents right now for them being displaced? Absolutely not. And I will continue to make sure, as long as I'm here and the residents continue to talk to me about these issues, that you will see me. I'll be at every Housing Authority meeting from now on, and I'll be bringing the residents with me to make sure that you and this Housing Authority are doing what we are tasked to do. This, my disappointment is not the fact, we all want development, I love it, the plan is great, but again, if we can't talk to the community and tell them the truth and be transparent about what's going on, that's where we're going to have an issue all the time. Because I invited you all to come to the meeting and present this in front of the community to say what is happening, so the residents would understand what's going on. And I'm still getting questions, I'm still being asked, what is happening over there? And I don't have an answer, because there's no residents over there. Not one answer for those residents to say what is happening in this community. So again, I'm asking that we, I'm going, I'm not going to support this. I don't, I do not appreciate the fact, I think we can find something better and some other people better to do this development for this community, and the fact that the people that are part of this development, I'm understanding from different conversations, are happy to keep communities at bay and not help promote homeownership or independence, but we rather keep them in these types of situations, and that's just not right. I don't agree with that whatsoever. So it's very unfortunate, again, too, that I have continued to say that this is why we need representation on the Economic Development Trust, to talk about these things, to talk to these types of trust items, these types of lending opportunities, these types of conversations, because we aren't getting all of the, all of the things that need to be said. We're not getting that. And then people are going off of what they're being told instead of what the community is saying, and that's just not right. That is just not right. So I would ask that we vote on this item separately, and again, in two weeks, I'm going to ask for the same, and I'm going to continue to make sure that you all see me every single month with the community with me.
All right, Councilor Nice, thanks for your comments. Mark and Joanna, thanks for your presentation. Why don't we pull item BW out? I'd entertain a motion at this time, and we'll vote on it separately.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's for, can you hear me? Okay. I think it's for both probably you and the city manager. So, I don't feel comfortable with this item and with the backstory that I'm, I don't feel I have everything in front of me to be able to make, to make a really sound decision on what to do here, because look, right, we sat with MAPS 4 presentations in front of us back in summer of 2020, and the main focus, if I recall, of the homelessness project we're doing in MAPS 4 is building permanent supportive housing for our most vulnerable to kind of stop that cycle, right, of homelessness and poverty? But the other one was replenishing our public housing stock, and during that presentation, I learned a whole lot I did not know about how we're talking since like the 1940s for a lot of these properties, they've not been replenished. And when I saw the presentation for this one, for this item, I like its approach to public housing versus how they would have designed and constructed things back in the day, which really didn't create a sense of community. I think you all have heard me talk about this before. But I don't, like, right now, I'm inclined to vote no on this and then do that again in a couple weeks, but at the same time, I feel like what's missing, we just heard from the councilwoman talk about this whole history, and I don't know that all of the council, like, I just feel like there should be like an update of some sort, like a context and understanding, because like, just a back and forth about, well, this is, no, we definitely did this, or no, they definitely didn't do that, like, he said, she said, that doesn't seem helpful, and I really would like some concrete, like, this is what is happening, and responses to what the councilwoman just said. You know what I mean? Like, it doesn't, that's, that's where I'm at, and I, I'm someone who likes everything kind of laid out in that sort of way.
I would say there was communication with HUD, and in terms of what was, what was stated versus what was actually followed, that what they followed in the process met with HUD's guidelines and requirements.
And at the same time, now, there's an opportunity to look at a different type of approach for HUD as far as a civil rights approach of what this, what happened with this case. So I'm not done with this.
And it just, it is, it is, it's concerning those public remarks. I understand what you're saying about the HUD process, but then to communicate to, you know, a community, this is what the process is going to be, you know, I just spoke to Belle Isle West last Thursday night after the Congress for Urbanism, and I told him that the Parks Department would be coming out and talking to them about MAPS 4 and parks. If I don't follow up with that, then that's, you know what I mean? Like, that's me, I've told them, this is a process we're going to do, so, I don't know, I guess it's kind of hitting a little close to home because that meeting just occurred so recently with me and those neighbors. So I hear what you're saying, but I just wanted to put that out there. I don't know.
Vice Mayor, could we look at possibly deferring this, and in the meantime, get a prepared written list of criticisms of this project, and then allow the Oklahoma Housing Authority to respond to those criticisms, and then present that to us? And when I say present it, we all can read, so, just in written form, and then we can vote. Just one thought, and I'm looking at it kind of from the perspective of the expense this project.
Yes.
It's an expensive project.
Absolutely.
Each month we wait.
Yeah.
Building materials continue to go up and up and up, and so, would it be possible to take that into account and go ahead and vote on the joint resolution today? And then, when we have final consideration on April 12th, hopefully, we can have more input, more knowledge, more information presented to us at that time.
Yeah.
And then if we're not there, we can defer it.
Absolutely.
But with, with building costs, the way they're going, out of control, every day we delay this, it hurts us.
I agree, and I think that's a fine solution, but I do think we need written criticisms and then allow the Oklahoma Housing Authority to respond to those in writing, and then allow each one of us to evaluate that and make a decision.
And hopefully, staff can start on that now and have it to us by April the 12th.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's good.
Yes.
Joy, would you like to speak, please?
I didn't know that it was coming up. Joy Reardon, 125 Northwest 9th. If you look on your map, you'll know that it's the towers, and if you go back through, Ms. Nice, if you go back through the city council things, over five years ago, I think, Mr. Ian come to the city council to get both the 23rd Street project rezoned and also a project that they've been promising us with the towers, supposed to be building a new building. And as a resident, and also, I was also on the resident council, we haven't heard anything from anybody from housing on, on either of the projects. And we've asked, I've got probably 23 residents at our building, at the towers, that's wondering what's going on. The, if you check with the fire department, the property that they were supposed to have built, the towers, the new building for the towers, every building on that property between Classen and Western, 10th and Park, have been on fire. That's where the new towers are supposed to go. And there are some other problems that we have brought to their attention that I did not want to air out in front of the, because I've been trying to work with, with everything. The problem is, and I don't know if it's part of the city council or not, that y'all, they're putting homeless alliance people in our buildings. I have nothing against a lot of the people that's over there, but they're bringing people that's destroying our building. The increase for security calls to our building alone has gone up 64%.
And Joy, I appreciate your issues, and staff, and myself, we're more than willing to sit down and talk to you about that.
If you would, please.
But right now, we're talking about Creston Park.
Yes, sir.
If that's okay.
That was, that was five years ago that Mr. Ian come to y'all and got it rezoned for that.
Yep. Okay, thank you for your comments, I really appreciate them, sir, ma'am, I'm sorry.
And before we vote, I also want to say, this is, this is a body that our city governs as far as representation, and there is lack of representation on this as far as experiences and the fact that we have some of these board members that have been on these, on this same said board for over 20 years. And in that, you can't get the things that you need for your community or for your city when you have that type of view, and I've been asking for us to add more perspective and more seats to this said board as well.
All right, at this time, I'd entertain a motion. We have a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Item nine BW passes five to three. We will next turn to our next presentation, which is found at page 11 of your agenda, and it's 11, it's, excuse me, nine CO, nine CO, at page 11.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jason Fairbrush, the Director of our Parking and Transit Department and the EMBARK Plan Program, is going to make a quick introduction here of this item, and then we'll have a presenter.
Yeah, so, good morning, Mayor and Council. Staff is pleased to be able to present to you an item for your consideration that approves the final plans and specifications for the Northwest Bus Rapid Transit Station Platforms. So with this item that's presented to you this morning, I wanted to acknowledge just our partners, really, the departments that we've been collaborating with to get this project to this point, so Public Works, Planning, Utilities, Parks, and then, of course, our partners at FTA and DOT have played a big role in getting this project to where we're at right now. And so, one of the things I wanted to point out to you is that with the item, once the item is approved this morning, the bids will be advertised in April, we'll be looking to award the project in June. Construction is expected to go through end of summer, early fall of '23, with service planned to start in the fall of '23. So at this point, the project has been and continues to be on schedule. So you'll notice that the item that you have is for approving final plans and specifications for the platforms, and the estimated amount is right around 17.6 million. As you'll recall, the project overall is about 28 million, and so the other pieces of that project include buses. Those buses are currently being manufactured. In fact, we had an opportunity to inspect those buses about two weeks ago, and we expect those buses to arrive in Oklahoma City within the next couple months. And then the other piece of the project are some other geo-bond projects that make up our local match for the grant, related to other sidewalks, other bike lanes that connect or are adjacent to the BRT. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification, we've talked a lot about this project being a $28 million project. When you add all the pieces up together, including the estimated 17.6 for the platforms, that's how we get to the overall budget. So with that, I'd like to take just a minute to introduce our project engineer from HNTB, Heidi Ilers, and she will provide a brief presentation of the final plans.
Heidi, it's Ilers?
Ilers, yes.
Okay, thank you.
People think Ilers because it starts with an E, but it's Ilers. Thank you so much. Good morning, Vice Mayor and City Council. I'm excited to present this project to you today. It's been a passion of mine the last couple of years as I've been working with EMBARK. So just a quick agenda, we're going to start with a system summary, go through the, show you a rendering, heat maps, TSP, which you're all familiar with from the streetcar, and then we're going to step through the route in each station, talk a little bit about budget and schedule. So we've got a lot of information here on this slide regarding the system summary. We have lots of new technology, including the TSP, Transit Signal Priority, the lanes, most of the bus is going to be riding in mixed traffic, except on Northwest Expressway where we have dedicated pull-offs. Our frequency is going to be 12 to 20 minutes, depending on the time of day. Jason already mentioned the project cost of 28 million. Our vehicles are going to be 40-foot, low emission vehicles. Our platforms will be really similar to the streetcar, they're going to have a lot of the same look and feel, but they're branded for the BRT. So they'll be ADA compliant, high level, so you just walk right onto the bus. And then the corridor itself is nine and a half miles, which will have, we have 30 stops designed right now, and then we're going to be adding two more stops at 31st, which I'll talk about in a minute, and we have a parking right at the end of the line. So here's one of the really cool renderings that we have put together, this is the outbound station at Classen and 23rd, so you can kind of see how the bus is going to pull up, we've got the raised platform, you can see the branding, it's not going to look exactly like that, but that's kind of the rendering that we have put together. You can see, we've got extra lighting on both sides of the station, bike racks, ADA compliant detectable warnings for those getting on the bus. And then specifically at this location, we actually made a double-sized station, so there's at Classen and 23rd, and then at the end of the line, we have larger we have larger stations for folks that are connecting to other routes. So this is what we call a heat map, and it's an outline of the population density in Oklahoma City. This helped us determine what makes sense for Oklahoma City from a BRT perspective. So this route is going to come within a half a mile of more than 40,000 residents and includes a park and ride at the end, so other residents further out to the northwest can connect and get to downtown. So this next heat map is actually employment density, which is pretty interesting. The route itself comes with 91,000 jobs in Oklahoma City, which is 23% of Oklahoma City's employment base. So you can see why this first route, and I know they're talking about other routes in Oklahoma City, but this first route connects so many people to so many jobs. So I'm going to briefly talk about Transit Signal Priority. The goals are to reduce the round trip travel time and to reduce the operations costs, reduce excessive transit delay at those congested intersections, and the biggest thing is to improve reliability. We want to make sure that when we say the bus is going to be there, it's going to be there. So we actually are going to integrate, there's a centralized TSP system here that the streetcar has implemented, and we're going to integrate our Bus Rapid Transit into that same system. So you can see at the bottom, the, some of the TSP that we'll have is a green extension, which holds the green for another 15 seconds. If the bus comes up to a red light, we'll have an early green. There's a couple of locations where we have an all red hold in order to keep the cars where they are and have the bus go through, and then have bus queue jumps, where actually the cars are stopped and the bus is able to go through the intersection on its own. So here's a quick visual of what TSP kind of looks like. And the figure on the bottom left is a, what we call a Priority Request Generator that sends the request from the signal to the Traffic Control Center, and that's when that signal is granted. And the centralized systems are a little bit more sophisticated and a little bit more reliable. So here's our route. As you can see, it's nine and a half miles. We start downtown Oklahoma City and go all the way out to Meridian and Northwest Expressway. One thing I wanted to note on this slide is you can see that gray box off to the corner. That's the stations at 31st that are going to be added by an amendment. We're currently working on that amendment right now. We didn't have time to get that added into our final plan, so it's going to be added by amendment to the contractor. Okay, so we're going to step through the stations here. So just to orient yourself, on the right is going to be that map, and I have highlighted the station location. So you kind of get a little bit of where you are in the city. And then on the left is going to be a snip from our plant set for the station itself. And then I have a little arrow in the top of how north is oriented on that plant sheet, just to hopefully get you, get yourself oriented. So we're going to start downtown, and we're going to work our way out to the northwest. So our first station is at Northwest, at Broadway and Main Street in the Downtown Financial District. And, you know, this is one of those critical stations that we added to the original alignment, actually stopped at the Transit Center, and we felt like it was really important to get this line all the way downtown. So we added this station and the Robinson and Main's station, or Robinson Park, excuse me. So this station is actually directly across the street from a streetcar station, which is a great connection to additional transit and is a great connection to a lot of restaurants, businesses, and employment centers. So the Transit Center is a really important stop for us. This will be our layover stop. It also has, we were able to get the two bays that are adjacent to Hudson, so they'll be a little bit more visually apparent at the Transit Station. We'll have some of our branding, hopefully get more folks to ride our BRT. As we move out, we're at Hudson and 8th Street, which is a really great connection to the Southern Midtown District, where there just seems like there's restaurants and coffee shops and things popping up all the time in this area. So I think it'll be a really popular stop for folks to get, get to their amenities, get to other things in the area. So then we move on to 10th Street and Lee. We're actually between 10th Street and Lee. And this is a really important stop because it's actually right adjacent to the St. Anthony Hospital. If you kind of see on the bottom of that map is actually the entrance to the hospital. So our bus, our bus stations are right in front of a huge employment center for Oklahoma City. And then also serves the Midtown District, where there's all kinds of restaurants and historic things to visit there. So we move out to Classen and 13th Street. And as you can see, the green on this map is actually bike lanes that we're adding. So with this project, we're adding bike lanes from 10th to 16th Street on Classen in the existing third lane on Classen. So you can see how those bike lanes actually navigate behind our stations, which we've done in other cities and feel like that's the safest method. So there's no interaction between the bikes and the buses. The inbound station at 17th and Classen will serve the Plaza area, which is just a few days, few blocks away. And will also include new ADA access along the median there. The outbound station at 18th and Classen is directly adjacent, that's the parking lot for the Homeland Grocery Center. So it'll be a good connection for residents to get their groceries and other things they need. So then we move to Classen and 23rd Street. So this is our inbound station. At the bottom of this is Walgreens. And as I mentioned before, Classen and 23rd actually has a double station, so it'll be a little bit bigger to accommodate more riders. And then we had to do quite a bit of work to get this, this station to fit in here, fixing some entrances and making sure we're ADA compliant at the intersection. Same is the case on the outbound, Classen and 23rd Station, which was that rendering we showed you. We have to do quite a bit of infrastructure improvements here in order to make sure we're ADA compliant and also fit in that larger station there. Classen and 36, we are going to add sidewalk on either side. Both of these stations are what we call far side, which is better for the TSP. Essentially, that gets the bus through the intersection so they can stop, pick up passengers, and move on their way. Classen and 42nd, we spent a lot of time kind of figuring out what makes the most sense for this station, and we ended up doing a mid-block crossing. Essentially, what that means is we're actually adding a traffic signal that'll stop cars in order for people, for pedestrians to safely cross at this location. At the bottom, you can see that entrance at the bottom of the map is the New View Facility, which is for the visually impaired. And so this was a really good option for them in order to safely cross, get where they need to go on the bus here. The other thing I want to note on this one is on the outbound, at the top of the map, what we're going to do is actually have an all red hold. So when folks are sitting here at the stop, at the stoplight, what we're going to do is allow the bus to merge into this, this inside lane while the cars are stopped, so it can safely make that maneuver, so it can make that left from Classen onto Northwest Expressway without having to merge with live traffic. So then we move on to Northwest Expressway. And Northwest Expressway and Blackwelder, you'll start seeing that we actually have bus pullouts on Northwest Expressway, which essentially means it's a new lane for the bus to stop in. And we've done that because there's a lot of vehicles Northwest Expressway. They're moving really fast, and we just didn't feel like it was safe for a bus to be stopped there picking up passengers. So you can see that we've added that on all the stations on Northwest Expressway. The outbound station on Northwest Expressway in Blackwelder has the same pull off. We added a little bit of additional for that location due to some constraints. There's a lot of drainage in that area. There's a, there's a large existing sewer line that we were trying to avoid. So we had to do a lot of civil improvements to make sure that we got that station to fit in and limit the cost. At Northwest Expressway in Penn, we also have the bus pullouts, but then we also offset the bus a little bit further because there's a future, there's a future project to add additional capacity on Northwest Expressway in this location. So we didn't want the bus stops to have to be relocated. So we went ahead and pushed the bus stops out an additional 12 feet. So you can see that's why there's some extra pavement that's been drawn in there. And at Northwest Expressway in Penn, we actually will have a queue jump for the bus. So it'll pull into the outside lane. Everybody will hold a red, and the bus will be able to go in front of all the cars, which is really similar to what you have on streetcar downtown. So the inbound at Northwest Expressway in Penn is very similar. We have, we offset that an additional 12 feet to allow for those future lanes. And then at this location, there's a ton of drainage and civil work that we actually needed to do. And then there's going to be this future development on the south side here that we're excited to connect with. Independence and 56, this is an exciting station pair because it connects right to the Integris Hospital, which is one of the biggest employment centers. If you can think back on that heat map, this, this is a pretty red area because there's a ton of people that work at this facility. So we were able, we're excited to be able to add stations here and connect to that facility. Portland and 56th Street, this is actually, Integris actually purchased the old hospital here as well. So there's a ton of employment, and they're growing that facility too. So being able to add to that and connect to that is going to be really important. As well as on the south side there, connecting to the existing Will Rogers Trail with our bus facility, or our bus stop, we think it'll be really, really important. So the inbound station at Northwest Expressway in Portland, we actually had to put it on Portland due to some existing constraints with the, the Will Rogers Trail along Northwest Expressway. So it's actually right when you turn on Portland is where that station is located. And we've added ADA compliant sidewalk to get folks back to that intersection safely and make sure they can traverse that intersection. Then the outbound station at Northwest Expressway in Portland is actually on Northwest Expressway. And so you can see, that's actually connected on the, the north side there. And we've added sidewalk and intersection improvements to make sure it's ADA compliant, as well as a bus pull off. Meridian and 63rd is a station pair that we've added here to connect to a lot of residential neighborhoods, as well as some large apartment complexes. We think it'll be important to, also to extend because that also connects to that Will Rogers Trail system on the south side. So we think it'll be a really good connection there. And then the end of the line station is at Meridian and Northwest Expressway. There's quite a bit of work going on here because this is also where we're adding our park and ride. So we're going to be milling overlaying the parking ride, re-striping it, add signing. We're going to relocate the entrance of that, relocate the, the current shelter that they have there. And we've actually set this up, we have a double station there right now, but we've set it up with the civil improvements. If they want to add an additional station in the future further west there, then they can add that in. So to kind of step through the engineer's estimate, you can see that we have it in three categories. The first is strictly the BRT project, the MCO 619. The second column is actually the sidewalk improvements along Classen that we're actually, we're all paying for is one thing, but it's considered one of the local match projects. And then the third is some waterline betterments that we've done. So it totals that 17.6 that Jason had mentioned previously. And then we got schedule. So this is an exciting moment for us. We've, I just mentioned to Jesse, we've had this date on our calendar for the last year and a half. And so it's excited, we're excited to start advertising for bids and see where they come in. Construction should start here in June and then finish next June, July timeframe. And we're going to be open and start revenue service in October of '23. I went through that quickly, but any questions?
Great presentation. Couple of questions. End of the line at Meridian, can you kind of paint for us a picture of what the parking will look like? How many cars could park there? And then the second thing, on the 31st Street Amendment, how do you envision that coming back for us to take a look at, at that proposal?
Sure. So the end of line should have about, I think, between, around 50 parking spots for folks. We don't have that, I don't have that number exactly in my head, but essentially it'll be, it should look like a brand new parking lot out there. We're going to have signage that shows, okay, this is, this is where you park for the parking, for the park and ride. And then for 31st Street, it'll be really similar to what I showed here today. Those were added here really recently. So we haven't actually designed them yet, but we'll have plan sheets that are dedicated to those 31st Street stations. We have a note to the contractor that he's gonna, that, we have a note to the contractor that those stations are going to be added. So he's aware that they're coming, but they'll have to come through amendment. So essentially what we'll do is we'll put those, we'll do the engineering as it relates to those. We'll show you what we've put together, and then we'll get that approved and added to the, to the bid.
And that's an approval by us, right? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have just, I don't know if this is you or Jason or Jesse, but knowing that some of those stations are going to be replacing current bus stop, current bus stops for specific routes, what is kind of that plan of, you know, continuing that maybe Route 5 service while, you know, maybe like the 23rd and Classen or some of those others that are just like directly, like that's where the stop currently is? Kind of how will that work for kind of that construction period?
So, so yeah, as, as you're aware, long term, the BRT will replace a portion of the Route 5. You bring up a really good point. You know, how do we continue to serve those customers that are, that are used to a stop being in a certain location? And we may have to decommission it, move it, to build a BRT platform. And so what we would do is we would relocate the stop, of course, to the, you know, as close proximity as we possibly could. But I think it's important to know there is a whole process for that in that, you know, we would go out and do a hazard analysis of the surrounding area where the station, where the bus stop currently is. If needed, we would run that through our Safety Operations Committee to make sure that wherever we move it to, we feel like is the safest option. And although we may not, and most likely will not reconstruct like a shelter and a pad and that kind of thing, we will equip that stop with street furniture in the form of a bench, and we'll make sure it's signed just like it is today.
Thanks for your presentation and all your work. I just have a, well, I have, I have a list. First, and I don't know who would be able to answer this because it's not our project, but it's the second time I've now heard this phrase, additional capacity on Northwest Expressway. Who's doing this? Like, are we, is someone adding lanes to Northwest Expressway?
There is a, I don't know. There is a plan for that, I guess. Do you want to take that?
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just not tracking the question. I'm sorry. Additional capacity on Northwest?
At around Pennsylvania, Penn Square Mall, when we got to that station, I heard the phrase, "project plan additional capacity coming to Northwest Expressway." Did, did, y'all know what I'm talking, y'all heard, you heard? Okay, I see something.
So that's maybe the, that's the additional lanes in front of Penn Square? Okay, you might want to.
We do have a traffic impact project that's scheduled for additional lanes there at 50th and Penn. We're still acquiring funds to move forward and to design and construction for that, but it is scheduled.
You just said 50th and Penn?
Right in front of the mall there.
Yeah, Northwest Expressway. I am so sorry. Northwest Expressway, 50th and Penn in that area, but it is on Northwest Expressway.
From where to where? I'm sorry. I just think this is important.
I believe, you know, I do not have that information. I will get that for you. I don't want to tell you something incorrect, but I can get you that information.
And do you know?
I think what they may be talking about is between Northwest Expressway and 50th, where that Oak is going in, that Oak development. There may be some plans for improvements there.
I know there are, yes. But that, I hope that's that because that's good. I hope what I'm hearing is not that we are going to add a lane of traffic on Northwest Expressway because y'all will never know the anger that I and a lot of residents would have about that. That, that is a, that is a horrifically bad decision.
So I believe that the traffic impact project that will be happening is at I-44 and Northwest Expressway, where we're adding lanes that are coming off of Northwest, off of I-44.
Okay.
And then turning right onto Northwest Expressway. That's the traffic impact project.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. That one I'm familiar with. Still not happy about it, but I'm okay. I can, I can handle that. I was about, I, my heart was going to, it was like the movie Alien. It was going to come out there. So, okay, thank you for that. Appreciate that clarification. Okay. My, my next one is I really wanted to thank EMBARK and our engineers for some of the amendments along the way, and I just want to note a couple of them. I think these were so important, and I really appreciate you all hearing, hearing me and quite frankly, some of the quite frankly, some of the residents on this. But originally, there was not going to be a sidewalk from Pennsylvania to Villa, which means people getting off at that station, families, for instance, wouldn't have had access to another Better Streets project. This is partially funded by Better Streets, but the library, the up at Villa. So now residents are going to be able to get back and forth from the new library renovations to the station. I really want to thank Jason and the engineers for that. I think that was such a helpful thing. Same with, and Jesse and I talked about this recently, I-44 from Portland to where Assistant City Manager Johnson was just talking about, to I-44. Like I-44 to Portland, that's where Clark's Barbecue and where those restaurants are. So now our workers will be able to get off there at 56th and Portland at the BRT station and access their jobs, to say nothing of our resident to want to go eat there. So I really want to appreciate you all publicly for that. I also want to say to residents who have asked me about connecting to the BRT, please know that in MAPS 4, there are at least two different pedestrian priority areas that we funded with sidewalk infrastructure. And we're just going to have to be on our guard, getting ready for the next bond to fill in the blanks from there. Because there's even a few blanks along this corridor where there will not be sidewalks and we got to make sure that that's a thing. Do we have an update on the tree conversation? And I know I might sound like Don Quixote tilting at windmills here, but we just had a Congress for New Urbanism conference here last week where if any of them were staring at this project, they'd be like, "BRT, bike lanes, trees, streetlights, livable, complete streets." I know it didn't come with funding, but I know we've been working on that. I don't know, do we have an update on that?
We've added trees to several of the locations, essentially one-for-one. So if there's any trees that have been taken down for the project, we're replacing them.
Okay. One is to go further on that. I, and I, maybe MAPS 4 is the way to do that, but I just cannot stress enough, everybody, we live on a prairie. You're going to feel it tonight and tomorrow with the weather. And the idea that we're about to ask people to walk up and down Northwest Expressway, and council really needs to hear this because this is, you just heard Jason say, $17 million investment on our end. If people don't use this because they don't feel comfortable walking along Northwest Expressway in Classen as the sun is bearing down on them, we will, the consequences are grave. The consequences are this. If this project is not successful, when will we be able to do further transit investments in our city? And people will point to this one as the proof of why we should not do it. So I might be tilting at the windmill, you might think that. No, I am telling you, how do we steward our taxpayer dollars and make this system really, really work? And y'all have a lot of naysayers in this community. Y'all have a lot of people who talk, use the word boondoggle to talk about your streetcar and public transit. And we have to get this right. So I'd like some more updates on where we are with the trees. And if MAPS 4, if that's the tree projects, money that we have to use, then we need to prioritize that, friends. And I want to make that public on this horseshoe. I hope you're hearing me on that. Intersections, I know I talked to Jason about crosswalks at 13th and 18th, but Public Works and with this project, is there a potential? I think anywhere, there's a couple places like 18th and Classen and 36th and Classen where I think restriping will go a long way. But are there any other places that we could be looking at along the route that are east-west connections, north-south connections on Expressway, where there's already existing sidewalk that has ADA that we could stripe crosswalks? You see what I'm saying? Because I know that's the rule.
We'll take a look at that.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you. See, sometimes you've just got to ask. I remain concerned about and hopeful at the same time that the traffic signalization will not be enough to achieve the 12 to 20-minute frequency. And I hope I'm wrong, and I know that Jason and his team are looking into other systems in the region that are not using just a dedicated lane for BRT, but are in fact using signal prioritization to use that 12 to 20-minute. Do you have any idea what that kind of number is?
Yeah, so we've used that very successfully in Kansas City. So the buses are operating in mixed traffic, just like they will be on Classen. And with TSP, we're able to keep those frequencies exactly as we planned. We model it all out, we lay it all out and make sure that it works. And then we, I think there's at least three months of testing, so we want to make sure that we have that ready to go. So when revenue service starts, we're ready.
Okay. Just, I say all this because, and this is also to the naysayers, I would remind them that retiring Senator Jim Enhoff helped us secure the matching funds for this. And I want to thank him publicly for that. I know that might shock some of you to hear me, of all people, say that, but credit where credit's due. It's important what he did. And he did it because he understands the importance of investing in infrastructure and the fact that there are 91,000 jobs along this corridor and that that's 23% of the region's jobs and 40,000 residents live there. That's conservative, probably the most conservative, I'm sure Mike Lee might be mad at me saying that, but one of the most conservative senators understood the importance of this project. And you got to ask yourself why at some point. And I think we just explained why. So those are my concerns. And if I, I don't want to sound like a negative Cassandra or anything, I feel like a mother or father whose child is 18 and they're about to go off to college. And we've worked so hard to get this project ready and I just want to make sure that we get it right. And so that's why I took time to kind of walk through what I, what I worry could be still the pitfalls, but I think your team is doing a really nice job. So that's all I'll say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Page 11, item 10, which is the concurrence docket. I can take with all one votes items A through P. I'd entertain a motion, please. Passes. We will now move to page 12, which is item 11, items requiring separate votes. What did he? Joy, you signed up for several things. Do you want to be heard all at once?
Move, move away, and he goes on.
Okay, all right. We will turn to item 11A, which is an ordinance on final hearing. It's to rezone 1534 Northwest 3rd Street from R3 Medium Density to Spud 1357. This is in Ward 6, please.
Yes, oh, wonderful. I was just about to ask that the applicant could come up and speak to this project.
Fallon Brooks, 1605 North Classen Boulevard.
And your name again, I'm sorry.
Fallon Brooks.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the applicant.
Thank you.
So yeah, if you can kind of just talk about kind of what the, what the change will be and kind of what the purpose of the project is.
Sure. Mostly the change is on the setback. And then we also allowed for one more unit. I think five was the maximum and we allowed for six here. And I think it's really important, this whole area, Metro Park, is kind of ripe for redevelopment. And I think sort of what I've been steering my clients towards is a lot more multifamily, more units before the plaza starts to move south with the big single-family homes. I think we get in with these multifamily units and sort of allow for some more affordable, not affordable housing, but more affordable units.
Yeah, for sure. Well, and I kind of wanted you to speak to this because as we've, as has been mentioned before, the Congress for New Urbanism was in Oklahoma City last week. And I can imagine if this had been shown to a lot of the folks there, they would have probably had heart eye emoji, you know, kind of feeling. So, yeah, I think speaking to that about having that increased density in these infill projects can allow for more neighbors, more affordability and access, even if it is a new build, just having additional units that, you know, I know our code right now kind of makes that process a little hard, but we're kind of working towards that. So I just, and I really appreciate the intent of kind of having a little more density and maybe trying to set a bit of a standard for the kind of redevelopment we'd like to see in that area. So unless there are questions, I will motion for approval.
We have a motion, a second. Cast your vote.
Thank you.
It passes. Thank you. Previously, items 11B and C were deferred to April 22nd, oh, 12th, excuse me, April 12th. And Michael, I think you wanted to speak as to item C, but just so you'll know, it's been deferred. Is that okay? All right. Now we find ourselves.
Hello, everybody.
It's been deferred.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry.
I'm not working.
Michael, it's been deferred to April the 12th, please. Thank you. All right, we're now at item 11D, which is an ordinance on final hearing. To rezone 5808 Northwest 23rd Street from R1 Single Family to Spud 1378. We find this in Ward 3.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have the Reverend Beau Ireland, I think it is. Did I say that right?
You did.
Oh, very good.
Thank you very much. And thank you for having me today.
Barbara, do you want him to speak at this time?
That's fine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So please state your name and a home address.
Sure. My name is Reverend Beau Ireland. I'm the pastor of Clark United Methodist Church and the executive director of the Lazarus Community. And I have formerly resided in Norman, Oklahoma at 352 We Woka. And I am about to be a new resident of your city.
Great. Glad to have you.
Thank you. We're bringing before you today a Spud permit that will allow us to operate on-ground, a transitional living facility that is highly structured and focused to give people who are coming out of homelessness an opportunity to gain a foothold. We look to convert a portion of our property at Clark United Methodist Church to house five core members, including myself, who will live on-ground. My wife will accompany me. And five others inside of the church building that is, is, has been currently on the verge of being unoccupied and sold property. Our effort in the Lazarus Community is to raise this church from the dead so that it does not become one more derelict church that is deserted. And the way we are doing that is to bring together this group to provide housing to about 25 to 30 people coming out of homelessness. What we're proposing is not a low-barrier or a no-barrier shelter. I want to make sure we're very clear about this. What we're proposing is a highly structured environment that takes place in what we would call a monastic environment or a modern-day monastery. It is set up as more, we could, we could say it's a modern-day RV community that does affordable housing that is hand-built RVs that are set up in the back portion of the property that is unused at this church, was about three and a half acres on a five-acre plot. I have visited with my neighbors, I have visited with many of the council persons here today, and also my board, who are here with me, and many individuals from your community. And today, we, we're hopeful that you will approve this measure.
Thank you, Reverend Ireland.
Thank you.
So when this was before planning, they came back with some amended technical evaluations and recommended approval. So having no protests at planning and seeing none today, I'm going to move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion. We now have a second, please cast your votes. Congratulations, it passes.
Thank you guys very much. God bless.
We're now moving to item E, which is an ordinance on final hearing. To rezone 12240 North Sooner Road from Spud 859 to Spud 1385. And we find that in Ward 7, please.
Let's see, we have someone here.
My name's John Corey on behalf of Cross ties Properties.
John, could you give an address too, please?
825 East 33rd Edmund Oaklawn.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. This is a pretty simple, straightforward Spud. The business we propose to go there is a firewood processing and delivery business. There won't be anything to it other than firewood on the property itself and equipment necessary to process that firewood, splitting, splitters, chainsaws, I suppose, that kind of thing. It has access to both Sooner Road and Northwest 122nd. It's pretty compatible with the area in that it's industrial and agriculture in nature. And we simply ask that the council approve this application. I'll entertain questions if you have any.
Okay. I don't have any questions. This is, this is new for me to see something like this, but I'm excited for it. So with that, and there were no protesters present, so with that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Congratulations, it passes.
Thank you for your time.
We now find ourselves at item 11F, and we have a speaker, I think, on that. This is an ordinance on final hearing. This is for a special permit, and it's to allow the U.S. Unit Community Commercial District, excuse me, it's to allow U.S. Unit Drinking Establishments sit down alcohol permitted in the C3 Community Commercial District. And we find that at 3200 North May Avenue. It is in Ward 2.
It sure is, Vice Mayor. Thanks for that. Did you say, has anyone, is anyone here?
There is a speaker signed up to speak, and if I read the handwriting correctly, it's Tracy Harris.
Yeah. Do you have questions?
I'm sorry?
Hi there. Yeah, if you want to describe the, introduce yourself and whereabouts you live and what you're, what you're planning on doing.
Yeah, I'm Tracy Harris. I actually live at 3200 North May, which is the same property we're discussing. And we're, the short version is we're requesting to move our business five blocks. We're currently at 36th and May, just east of there, and we're wanting to move to 31st and May. We've done a full restoration on that building.
Yeah. I'm very familiar with your business there on 36th and May, and I'm very, very much a fan of it, in fact.
Thank you.
Of course. Credit where, again, theme of the day, credit where credit's due. So I'm hopeful that this, that this replicates the success you had over there. I think this might be, need to be a note for Jeff Butler. I'm thinking this planning concern I have. We received a, I received yesterday a phone call while I was teaching from a resident who has some property over here and there's some other residents in Venice. They're concerned, and you said you already kind of lived there, so you might be thinking about this too, but they're concerned about Winter Drive and 31st Street and the kids who will be walking to Northwest Classen School. And so they're just worried about people possibly leaving this establishment and not being in the right frame of mind, which is why I don't want people in cars when they're going to these sorts of places, or Uber or Lyft or designated driver, but all the same, not everyone makes the right decision sometimes. And so they express concerns and opposition to, to your project. I don't share that opposition, but I am concerned about what we could do for some possible traffic mitigation, I'm sorry, traffic calming, maybe around this area, and start kind of thinking about that now as we start heading toward the next bond. But I hear that concern. I don't know if you have any thoughts on it as well.
I actually spoke with her. She called me and I missed the call but was able to return her, her phone. So I spoke with her at Link yesterday, yesterday evening. There's not actually direct access from 31st and May to Winter. Venice is a really nice neighborhood. not actually direct access from 31st and May to Winter. Venice is a really nice neighborhood. It's not a neighborhood that's a shortcut to anywhere. We have agreed to put signage in our parking lot that says you must exit to May Avenue.
Okay.
To go the other direction is not convenient to get really anywhere. And our building does face May. We've also discussed signage and that kind of thing, but our establishment doesn't open until 4 o'clock, which is well after school hours. The only day it opens earlier than that is Sundays, which is 2 o'clock, which is also not a school day.
That's very helpful, and that was some of the misinformation. I'm glad, thank you for clarifying that, because that was some of the misinformation that was flowing around, that you all would be opened earlier in the day. I was like, well, that's not my experience.
We open at 4 most days. We're closed on Monday. We're, the only day we open any earlier than that is Tuesday, that was Tuesday, is Sunday, at 2 o'clock.
Okay, that's helpful, and thank you for the clarification on the signage. And I think that'll be a very helpful way to do that. So I appreciate you hearing that concern. Otherwise, I still do want to kind of think about some traffic calming stuff as time goes on. Let our office know if you're seeing the traffic not go the direction that you're wanting it to go, so that we can kind of start thinking about possible ways. Infrastructure-wise, we can kind of help out there.
Yeah, and I think with the way that parking lot is laid out, it's, there's adequate parking, but you're not forced to go any direction at all. But it is most convenient to go toward May Avenue.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just keep me posted, but otherwise, with just that stated public, you know, concern, I would move for approval, and wish you well.
All right, thank you.
James, one thing, Joy signed up.
Oh, well, Brent, come on in, Joy.
No? Okay, all right, all right. All right, so we have a motion, and we're looking for a second. Thank you. Let's start over. We find ourselves at item 11G, which is an ordinance on final hearing. It's for the redistricting pursuant to the Charter of the City of Oklahoma City. What the city manager tells me is that we will need to first pass it, and then if it does pass, we will need a second vote declaring the emergency. Is there, are there any questions or any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Cast your votes. It passes. I'll now entertain a motion to make this ordinance an emergency. We have a motion, a second. Please vote. The redistricting has passed with the emergency. We'll now go to items 11H and I, and you had mentioned, okay. Brent, do you want to explain why we need to hold for a little bit?
Yes, sir. We did receive nine electronic bids today, and our financial staff, along with our municipal advisor, are reviewing those right now. One of the things they'll do is the successful bidder has to provide us a wire transfer, and we're waiting on that, and so if we could hold off on that. But I can talk about item J if you'd like, when it comes up.
Okay, let's do this. We're going to hold off on, are you telling me H and I?
Yes, sir.
At this time? And why don't you just stay up there? Unless somebody has questions about H and I, I'm going to have Brent talk about J. Is that okay? All right, please proceed.
Yes, back in February 15th, we brought a funding plan for you to do a refunding of our 2012 general obligation bonds. And today, we have a public hearing and then a resolution providing for a parameter sale of issuing up to $37 million to refund those bonds. We anticipate, when I came to you last month, interest rates were really low, and we were anticipating about a 15% present value savings. Now, that's around 11%. And based on the bids we got today, it may be closer to 10. But our debt policy states that we have to have a minimum of 3% net present value savings, so we're well above that. And so what we're looking to do here today is just get the authorization from you, and then we anticipate doing pricing in mid-April. And then, but if market conditions are not such, the nice thing about this with the parameter sale, if market conditions are not such, we can put that off until later date. So, and we'll be doing that by negotiated sale.
And is this just a public hearing, or do we need to also vote on J2?
We need to vote on 2.
Okay. Is there anybody signed up to speak for the public hearing as to 11J?
No, there's not.
All right. And Michael, just so you know, you signed up for H, item H, and that's being deferred for a little while. We'll get back to it, okay? All right, so we will now, I would entertain a motion as to item 11J2. We have a motion, a second. Please vote. It passes, thank you. We'll now go to item 11K, which is an ordinance to be introduced.
Do we need to defer H and I?
We're coming back to it.
Like, literally in this meeting?
In this meeting.
Oh, I always thought you meant like, in two weeks.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, no, no, just, just later in the meeting. I'm sorry, that's my fault, I didn't make it clear. All right, now, let's go to item K, which is an ordinance to be introduced at for public hearing April 12th, and final hearing on April 26th. This is amending the Oklahoma Municipal Code as it pertains to the massages. So I think we have someone, okay, yeah, wherever you want.
Good morning, Steve Kreis from the City Attorney's Office. The ordinance being introduced today would change the existing ordinance regarding licensing of massage parlors, and it would make it an offense to, or it would allow a parlor to not obtain a license if they have a violation for enumerated offenses relating to sexual misconduct. Currently, it requires a conviction. It turns out that's rare, because, you know, these entities will get probation, it'll be dismissed, they'll get it expunged, and so each time it comes up, they don't have any conviction history to prohibit them from continuing in this type of business. So this will allow the fact of a violation to be a reason to not issue or to revoke a license.
Gotcha, gotcha. So if there are no questions, we-
I do have a, I was curious if we could get data on, like, maybe the last five years of both, I guess, maybe licenses, and then when this has come up, where someone's had a violation, but maybe not a conviction, and, and also maybe a convict, like, I'd just be curious to actually have data on how often this is occurring, and kind of what that looks like.
Does it, does it become, does it become difficult because of the expungements?
Yes, it's difficult to obtain a conviction. So when you have a licensee who has probably been violating this ordinance, you know, multiple times in the past, the problem is there's no conviction for it, so.
I understand. What I'm saying is, when there is a charge of this, where someone has a license and is charged, I guess with misconduct, I'd like to see data on that, because I'm, what I'm hearing is, you essentially want to be able to not give a license to someone if they've had a charge on such a misconduct under all of these violations.
And Steve, can you clarify, too, if it's a charge, or if it's a violation? So what you're considering a violation, is that just where we filed charges, or is there another definition?
No, we will, if we pass this change, the issuance of a citation or a violation would be the predicate. So it would be a violation, supported by probable cause, filed in the district court.
Right, the wording is a pending charge in the ordinance.
Other than that information, any other questions, or?
All right. We need to have a motion on the ordinance to be introduced, and I'd entertain that motion at this time.
Not a conviction, if we pass this. So first of all, this is the introduction. This is the introduction of the item, so today it would not do that.
Okay.
And Steve, can you answer that question?
Essentially, yes. You have, you know, police know, or can identify which massage parlors are having these violations of sexual misconduct. So when they go in and they notice the violation, they'll charge the person with a crime. And then what happens is, that person, the owner, whoever, doesn't, they get a conviction, but then it's expunged. So when they get a subsequent conviction, we can't take any action, because it's essentially starting from scratch. So this would allow the filing of the charge to establish the basis for denying the license, or revoking the license.
Really, what we're doing today is just setting it up for a public hearing, giving all the council in the horseshoe until April 26th to look at this and, and come back with further thoughts and input. Yeah, yeah. So we are ready for a motion. We have a second. Please cast your votes. It passes. We now find ourselves at item 11L, and this is an ordinance to be introduced, also set for public hearing April 12th, and the final hearing on April 26th. This is to allow authorized non-sworn members of the Police Department to prepare and submit collision reports. I'm really interested in this. I think this is going to be a really helpful ordinance, and I'd like to hear from the chief at this time.
Right, thank you, everyone. Wade Gorley, Chief of Police. Mr. Kreis is going to talk about the legal aspects of this. I'm going to talk about just the idea behind it and what we're looking at doing. We currently have civilian employees called property crime specialists. These are folks that usually come out of a partnership with the University of Central Oklahoma, and they're hired as a non-sworn position that actually is kind of a pipeline for us into our CSI. So these officers, or these civilians right now, respond to non-emergency, low-level type calls, such as larcenies, where there's no suspect present, burglaries, if someone comes home, finds their house broken into, there's no suspect there at the time. So they come out and take reports, they can process the scene, take fingerprints, those kind of things as well, and they do a very good job for us. And again, it's a pipeline into our CSI, and even into the Police Department as well, if they choose to do that. What we want to do is expand this program and add non-injury accidents to that. Currently, we respond to several hundred accidents a month, anywhere from the highest numbers I've seen, averages of around 900 a month, that our officers respond to. And these are non-injury accidents, where no one is hurt. They're usually just, you know, a report for insurance purposes, in all intents and purposes. And so what we want to do is allow these civilian PCS to now respond to these. It frees up our officers to handle more pressing matters. I think, too, they'll do a much better job, because they're not going to be worried about getting to the next call, and, you know, responding to more pressing matters. They'll go out and actually be able to devote more time to this process. And so that's what we're looking at doing. If you have any questions of me, just about the overall idea and what we're doing, then I'll take those. And if not, I'll let Mr. Kreis talk about the legal aspects of why we need the ordinance change to do that.
Chief, just real quickly, a comment, and I'm glad to hear that you're focusing on students coming from UCO in their forensic program. My understanding is, that's the leading institution for studies in regards to forensic investigations, and that institution has been tasked with setting the accreditation procedures, protocol, for all other educational institutions that offer that type of study. So you're dealing with the best of the best.
It's been an outstanding partnership. We work with them with internships, and again, a lot of our CSI come from that program. A lot of the property crime specialists we have now come from that program. It's been an excellent recruiting tool for us and a great partnership.
Speaking of which, since this involves in some measure my employer, I'm going to recuse myself, but I wish you all well in that conversation.
Steve, do you want to make a presentation?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything you want to present?
No, just the basis for the change is, there's a limitation in the ordinance, so we're just, this will expand it to allow the non-sworn police employees to engage in this.
Okay. If there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to-
No, 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 no.
Oh, hang on. Michael, I'm so sorry, I apologize. Forgive me. Michael Washington, would you please-
Thank you.
-give your home address?
2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73, with three ones on the back. Now then, Michael Washington. Mr. Wade Gorley, now I hear you are Gorley, I keep getting your name mixed up. Now, you're no good, and I don't like your police force anyway. Racist white supremacist. Okay, now, I said you white supremacist, ain't nobody, on the First Amendment, I say it again, Mr. White supremacist. Listen to me. Now then, here it is, you got this white supremacist, wants non-commissioned officers, or even officers in and of itself, to go out on non-injury accidents, and not have to wear a sworn statement attached.
Is this one?
And just say, now, here I am, I'm going to do the police job for them, and expand it whatever you already have going, non-injury accidents. So what I'm going to do is that we're going to now allow y'all to save up, free up, listen to this, to free up time for our officers to do something else. Listen to that. Not for any other germane or important issue, other than just, let's separate us. Look at, look at what we're saying here. We're not doing it because it's an emergency or some hazard thing going on, but we need more officers to probably go and harass people. He's not saying exactly what, he just said to free up. I don't know, so I'm just surmising. I have no other ground to go on, right? Now, this is not a job for civilians. This involves possibly, people probably haven't gotten into with one another over an accident or whatever. And somebody made themselves might need to say, okay, now I need to take this a little bit further and file an incident report, per se, into the officers of Oklahoma City Police Department. And if they do so, then, to have, watch this here, to have a private citizen walk in, everybody knows that the same level of respect is not going to be there, don't we? Huh? Anyone with common sense would know, don't we? So in reality, then, what you're doing is escalating it, maybe what he's doing anyway. He want to escalate the situation, so they can put people in that doggone stinkin' jail. That's probably what he want to do. That's what I believe in, and he can't make me believe otherwise. That's right, I go to hell believing that that no-good sucker there. Bottom line. Excuse me, sorry to mean, go that far, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm bad. Anyhow, that is not necessary. It will cause added incidents. It will cause people possibly going out, I'm telling y'all, y'all, everybody know this here, non-injury accident, if somebody's, boom, you're lying, you did, I was going the other way, sucker, boom, 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 boom.
30 seconds remaining.
Now, look at that, y'all. Let's look at the reality here. Don't just give this man something because he said he want to help his Police Department. That's not how it goes. I'm telling you, it's a hidden sinister attachment to this, that he's not wanting us to realize. And for the most part, if we do this, then what you're doing is letting people, again, be exposed. Everybody know, come on, man, common sense. I'm a private citizen, I'm going to tell you two, you had an accident, I'm going to get in your way. Come on, man. No.
Michael, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to have this ordinance introduced, and I entertain a motion at this time. Please. We have a motion, a second. Please vote. Item 11L passes. We now find ourselves at item 11M, which is also an ordinance to be introduced, public hearing April 12th, and final hearing April 26th. This relates to sewers and sewer disposal, solid waste, and also importantly, our general schedule of fees. Sitting on the Water Trust Board, I know that we have capital improvement plans that run at least five years. We are, that's, it's a big-ticket item, probably $1.7 billion. And this work is really critical, because it's going to allow us to have adequate water for our kids and grandkids through 2060. And so with, after saying that, I'll turn it over to Chris. Glad you're here today, Chris.
Good morning, and thank you. Chris Browning, Utilities Director. So under Oklahoma law, the Water Utilities Trust is required to periodically take a look at our rates, to make sure that we're charging the actual cost of service for all the services that we deliver to our various customer classes. So we do that every four to five years. We've been analyzing diligently over the last year or so, to make sure that we are adequately recovering the costs. We hired Raftellus Financial Consultants to come in and take a look. That's their specialty. They have recommendations, and this morning, we have Vanessa Aguilar, our Business Manager, going to present those recommendations for your consideration. So with that, Vanessa.
Thank you. Good morning, Vanessa.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council. So we'll go through a brief presentation to introduce to you the- So we'll go through a brief presentation to introduce to you the recommendations that go with this ordinance. So as Chris mentioned, we engaged Raftellus Financial Consultants in November of 2020 to conduct the cost of service study for us, looking at water, wastewater, and solid waste management. Overall, the findings are to stay the course, making minor adjustments to the rate structure as well as to making rate adjustments over the five-year period. So as Chris mentioned, why do we do rate studies? Aqua has a longstanding practice of doing cost of service studies every four to five years, and we take a look at our financial plan. We ensure that we're able to fund operations and maintenance, execute our capital plan, which is, Vice Mayor mentioned, $1.7 billion over the next five years. This includes construction award of the Second Atoka Pipeline, as well as improvements to ensure that we have system resiliency and reliability to serve our customers within the city of Oklahoma City, as well as our surrounding communities. In addition, the rate study provides, we ensure that we're able to maintain adequate reserves in water, wastewater, and solid waste management. And last but not least, the cost of service study process helps us ensure that we have rate equity among our customer classes, that we don't have subsidies among customer groups. And tied with that, we also look and make sure that we have affordability for our customers, that those that are causing the impact, the demand on our system, that they pay their fair share in regards to the cost to serve them. And that was one of the overarching objectives and priorities in our study, was balancing affordability with sustainability, knowing that as a utility, we have to provide investments in our infrastructure, but balancing that with affordability, making sure our bills are affordable for our customers. And you'll see how we've achieved that here in the next few slides. So I'll start with the bottom line upfront. We'll take a look at a few of the sample bill impacts based on the recommended rates and charges that we have in this ordinance. This is a total monthly bill for a low-volume user customer. This is someone who Inside City Residential uses 2,000 gallons of water, 2,000 gallons of wastewater, and has our typical solid waste service. For this type of customer, in the first year, we're looking at an adjustment of about $1.61, with a similar adjustment over the five-year period, about a 2.6 adjustment. Now for our average customer, this is a sample bill comparison for our most typical residential customer Inside City, someone who uses about 7,000 gallons of water, 5,000 gallons of wastewater, and has our typical solid waste service. For this type of customer, we would be looking at $3.68 adjustment to the monthly bill in the first adjustment, and a similar rate of adjustment over the five-year period for a 4% adjustment. We also have a comparison for a seasonal irrigation user. This is for a type of customer Inside City Residential that not only they have indoor usage, but they may also have some outdoor watering usage as well. For this type of customer, we would see about $10.15 adjustment in the first period, in the first year of adjustment, and about a 6.6 adjustment over the five-year period. And so with that, that introduces the highlights of the bill impacts. Now I'll transition to some of the specific findings and recommendations of the study. We'll start with solid waste management first. Solid waste management has a storm debris reserve, which is used to fund our storm debris collection efforts for residential customers throughout the city. Currently, that reserve is set at $20 million. We use that to do the collection of the debris from residential homes and to pay for the disposal at the landfills. And I'll give you a couple of recent analysis of how we, our cost of service consultant, analyzed what that current level of the reserve is and what it should be. We looked at our historical data, and in today's dollars, the 2007, 2008 ice storm was almost $35 million. In more recent history, you may recall the ice storm of October 2020, that event alone was $15 million for the utilities department to pay for the contracted services, to pick up the debris, and to dispose of that at the landfill. Based on that, in addition, federal, the federal government does provide support if they declare an emergency. So if the federal government does declare the event an emergency, they will provide reimbursement up to 75%. However, they don't always declare an emergency, and also, if we do get that declaration, the reimbursement takes three to five years. So with that said, our consultant looked at what does the city need in order to ensure that we are still able to provide the level of service that our customers, our residential customers need in regards to a storm event, whether it's a tornado, an ice storm, or a wind event. So you can see on the chart here, it has a 10-year projection where the recommendation is to adjust the storm debris to $45 million in the 10-year period. This would allow the utilities department to ensure that we're able to fund at least three events, multiple events, in any given year while we're waiting for reimbursements should one be awarded. That leads me to the next slide on solid waste service charge recommendations. So our cost of service took a look at the cost to provide the services for solid waste, and overall, we're looking about 75 cents adjustment to the monthly bill on an annual basis. You can see in the table, it has the breakdown of those recommended service charges over the five-year period. On the other side, you can see a breakdown of the cost of service components. One of the largest component for solid waste services is the big blue service, followed by recycling service, bulky, the landfill disposal, and then the smallest portion at the top is the storm debris component. The last rate adjustment for solid waste management was done in 2019. This recommendation is for a five-year implementation, starting with effective date of June 1st. As we mentioned earlier, we would look at doing another cost of service process and study, starting in 2025, looking at recommendations for the next five-year forward. And so with that, I'll transition to water and wastewater. In the water and wastewater cost of service study, the consultant looked at our data, our demand patterns for our customers. And specifically, here's one of the recommendations with our residential customers. We bill our residential customers for the water they use on a four-tier fixed structure. And looking at that fourth tier, one of the recommendations is to adjust that from 30,000 gallons down to 25,000 gallons. Our tiered structure is inclining block rate, so it is intended to send a water conservation pricing signal, knowing that customers, as they use more, they will pay more. And so adjusting that threshold down to 25,000 gallons will allow us to send that appropriate pricing signal to ensure that customers are using water efficiently and wisely, but also it ties back to affordability, knowing that, as I mentioned, those that use more pay more. The customers that place the peak demand on our system will pay the cost to serve them, as the utility needs to provide an investment in our infrastructure, in our treatment plants, in our distribution system year-round, even though that peak may only be for the summer months. The next recommendation that came out of the study process was realigning the base charges. The base charges are our fixed cost, part of the utility bill. This one here is for water. What do we recover out of the base charges? That provides recovery of costs for the meter itself, the billing, meter reading, and some of the treatment distribution costs, as well as fire protection. What we found in the study was there was an over-recovery of costs from some of the smaller meter sizes and an under-recovery from some of the larger meter sizes. So this recommendation is to make that realignment to make sure that there are no subsidies among our customers based on meter size. One of the final insights and recommendation is to create a new multifamily class. Currently, multifamily customers are a part of a customer class called non-residential. This customer class includes anything from a fast-food restaurant, a hospital, and a shopping center. Breaking out multifamily to its own customer class will provide them the benefit to make sure we're recovering the appropriate cost of service from this particular customer group. It will provide the objective of achieving equity and also affordability. Since multifamily customers tend to have a different usage patterns than other types of non-residential customers that I mentioned, the cost of service is going to be a little bit different. We'll see that here in a little bit within the rates and some of the sample bills. And just to note, multifamily would, in this case, we would define it as four units and above. So any complex that has four units and more would be considered part of the multifamily class. Three units or less would be considered residential under the rate, under the fixed tiered structure. And so with that, I'll transition to showing you some of the specifics on the recommended rates and charges. So this is a sample of the Inside City Residential base charge and the volumetric rates for our residential customers over the five-year period. As you can see here for our residential customers, we're recommending keeping the base charge flat at $18.38 over the five-year period. This is, we're showing a sample of a meter size. This is a 5'8" connection, which is the most common type of our residential customers. Down below on the table, you can see the volumetric rates. This shows you the proposed rate adjustments over the five-year periods, as I described to you the four tiers. I'll point out that the first two tiers are typically our essential indoor use. The third tier and the fourth tier are more our outdoor watering and high outdoor watering, seasonal water use. 88% of our bills fall within the two, first two tiers. Only 2.3% of our bills are at the last tier, the fourth tier. And also, on the table, you can see this reflects the recommendation of adjusting that fourth tier from 30,000 gallons down to 25,000. For wastewater, here's our proposed rates and charges for Inside City Residential. You can see the sample 5'8" base charge, as well as the per-thousand-gallon rate adjusting minimally over the five-year period. Inside City Non-Residential Multifamily. So I mentioned, we have non-residential customer class and multifamily. These customer classes, in comparison to residential, are based on a different tiered structure. You can see here, it mentions AWC, Average Winter Consumption. So the tiers for these two customer classes will be based on the average use of their water from December, January, and February. That will establish their tiers. The first tier, second tier, and third tier will be individually established for each of these customers based on their own water use. You can see on this chart, multifamily, the proposed multifamily class below, the water rates are slightly lower in comparison to the non-residential customer class. And here's, on the flip side, Inside City Non-Residential wastewater rates for the five-year period for non-residential, as well as multifamily. Again, these rates are intended to recover the cost to serve these customers. So here's a sample bill comparison. We talked about the proposed multifamily class and how they're currently under non-residential. So we wanted to show an example bill of water and wastewater, the base charges, and volumetric usage for an eight-unit apartment complex that we pulled out of the billing system, and show you on a per-unit basis, what does that look like comparing if this apartment complex stayed as a non-residential customer, or if they were in this proposed multifamily class. As you can see here, there are potential savings under the multifamily class that landlords could pass on to their tenants. Here are some other typical bill samples. This is a monthly bill for non-residential customers. This takes into consideration water and wastewater services. As you can see here, we have a shopping center, a hospital, a hotel, an office, and a restaurant. All of these adjustments are projected to be around 4%, some about 4.6%, and on average over the five-year period. I'll point out that this does not include solid waste services, since typically for commercial customers, solid waste services is contracted out to outside the city. Private contractors serve the majority of our commercial customers. And so with that, Raftellus did a survey to compare for these recommended rates and charges, how do we compare to some of our local peer communities? So for a typical residential customer that has a 5'8" meter, uses 7,000 gallons of water, and 5,000 gallons of wastewater, here is shown a survey in comparing to other communities. You can see Oklahoma City Current and Oklahoma City Proposed for the first adjustment within the red box, and some of our peer communities alongside the survey. I will note, some of these communities, specifically ones below the average, some of these communities have groundwater. Groundwater isn't sustainable in the long term, as reports indicate, and it is less costlier to treat in comparison to surface water. Another thing I'll point out with the survey is, as Oklahoma City today is looking at recommendations to adjust rates and charges, these other communities are also going through this process, where if we were to do this survey in a year or two, we would anticipate the entire survey, the entire communities, to shift upward. And so that takes me to Aqua and wholesalers. So the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust is a regional water provider. We provide water to about 1.4 million residents in the central Oklahoma. Not only do we serve the city of Oklahoma City, but we also provide water, treated water, to many of the communities that were shown on the survey before, the city of Norman, Moore, El Reno, Yukon, Mustang, to name a few. The city of Oklahoma City and Aqua values the partnership that we have with these wholesale communities, and part of the investments that we have in our infrastructure, as we mentioned, the Second Atoka Pipeline, is to ensure that we can continue to provide water not only to the city of Oklahoma City, but to the region, to some of our wholesale partners. In the cost of service, the evaluation had recommendations for adjustments to their bills, about an average of 5% per year. And so with that, we would just like to conclude some of the main takeaways overall. We're recommending to stay the course, making adjustments to the rates and charges over the five years. This will allow us to fund our operations and maintenance, to execute our capital program over the five-year period, $1.7 billion, to maintain adequate reserves, including the storm debris reserve, to make sure that we have rate equity. As the cost of service study evaluates those identified subsidies and ensures that we don't have subsidies, it ensures that we're charging the cost to provide the service to each of our customers in the water utility, wastewater, and solid waste utility. And last but not least, we also achieve our objective of balancing affordability, making sure that for our low-volume users, our low-income customers, that they are able to have access to safe drinking water with low and affordable rates, and while also balancing the need for continuing to provide investments in our infrastructure. And so with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the horseshoe? I think we have somebody that's, James, would you like to speak? Okay, I think we have someone that signed up to speak, and that person is Mr. Michael Washington.
Well, well, ma'am, thank you for that presentation. Lengthy, however, very knowledgeable. I've learned something that Michael never thought he would. Now then. You heard the lady so eloquently state before she left this podium, expressing her understanding of a utilities department that is welcoming all residents to continue to receive the water supplies that her utilities company provides. Interestingly enough, I find it somewhat confusing somewhat, and I must admit, this wasn't one of my intended targets today. And simply because it isn't, I don't have enough knowledge and information really to give my little really twofourty to it. Now then, moving on. But I do have a slight few questions. Number one, what if this single, what if this family unit is living in a unit? Now watch it now, you just said out of your own mouth, family unit cost. Now, what if that one person is living in that family unit, is the same cost still the same? You didn't say anything about that. Because now, if you're living in that same apartment structure, you're still going to be charged that. Sir, you have to listen to some of us listens. So I'm saying to you, if there is not a family structured unit, and there's only one person living in that unit, do they, you still get charged the same rate? That part was missed out. Now, I'm sure you understand what I'm saying. And the current water rate for the private residential area is 679, and I think she said in 2026, it's going up to $10.71. Now, I don't know exactly what area that was, walked out and came back on in, but let me see this here. me see this here. So that's an increase of about, almost, let's just say roughly close to four dollars. What is the reason for this increase like this here? What did she just say? So we can maintain, increase our utility reservoirs and explorations and other ideas that we may have that we want to explore, but we can't do it without y'all's money helping us? Is that necessary? Again, I might have to give a, just a little leeway this time. Let me close. You say that, ma'am, that you're partnering with all these people, OCU, I guess that's the Oklahoma City Water Utility Department, I guess that's here, and your other partners. I'm going to defer at this moment from this point and see if I can do a little bit more investigation and come back. Because my water bill is already high. I'll talk to y'all later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Anybody else to speak?
I can speak again.
Any other questions? I, I really believe this is some of the most important work that we will be doing. It will affect this city all the way through 2060, and so I would entertain a motion for this ordinance to be introduced at this time. It passes. Vanessa, thank you for a great presentation. Now we need to go back. Joe Beth, we're going to go back to H and I. And we have a report from Brent as to those two items.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Before I get started, I'd just like to acknowledge our team that we have here. We have Angela Pierce, our Assistant Finance Director, and Mike Baskin, our Debt Manager, who've worked diligently on this. We have Jen Arnt with Public Financial Management. And then we have our Bond Counsel, John Mike and Michael Williamson and Jared Davidson here with you. Mike's going to hand out some corrected items for you, basically to fill in the blanks today. So we were fortunate, market, the rates were higher than we had anticipated, but we're in that market environment today. As we, as you authorized, on February 15th, we received nine electronic bids this morning for the purchase of 110 million dollars worth of general obligation bonds that were authorized by the residents of this community in 2017. The lowest qualified bid was received from B of A Securities with a true interest cost of 3.086588%. Staff recommends the 110 million dollar general obligation bond, Series 2022, be sold to B of A Securities at a true interest rate, true interest cost of 3.086588. And in comparison, last year, our rate was 1.93. So interest rates are going up. So with that, I would like to make that recommendation. That's on item H.
It's on item H. Any, any questions from any of the members of the council?
Super nerd question. How does it work when, I don't know if we've been in this sort of situation before, like when you have the item on the agenda, but you don't have the actual, who we would be going to for the bond? Like what does that process look like today?
So the information that you've been handed out, that you've received, we'll get that incorporated. So the motion that is made will incorporate the information that you've been handed.
Okay.
And then we'll incorporate that into the final documents.
You see the second paragraph? That's what we're going to be adding to the motion.
So, but we have to actually vote to amend that right now, right?
I don't believe, do we have to amend?
I don't think we do, but we can to be safe if you feel more comfortable that way.
I, I, I'm just wanting to make sure the process is what it needs to be.
Right. I believe we introduce it with the blanks and then, and then we're able to adopt it with the information once we receive the bids.
Any other questions? If there being none, I would entertain a motion that we accept 11H with the report that was just provided to us. It passes. You know what, Michael, I'm going to be in trouble. You signed up for this, I forgot. You sure? All right. All right. So it passes. We now go to item 11I.
Yes, this is the companion ordinance for the award of these bonds to B of A Securities, again at a 3.086588%. I may be saying that in my sleep tonight.
There are no questions. I would entertain a motion that we adopt this along with the report that was provided to us in the last few minutes.
And we do need that with emergency, please.
While we're waiting, what was the savings? Did we get to the 10% in terms of refinancing?
On the refinancing, we will do that at a different date.
I see.
We'll, we'll get back to you. But right now, we, we had it projected 11%, but the rates were a little higher today than we anticipated. So like I said previously, I think it'll be closer to maybe nine, 10%. When we do that, I will let you know.
That's fine. Thank you.
What did you anticipate rates being?
Well, the, the market changes by the minute. I was just looking at the rates here and I've looked at the 10-year treasury and it went, at, at 9:30, it was at 4, at 250, and now it was down, then it went down to 242, and now it's back up to 240. The, the market rates change and the investors, they decide what's the rate that they can live with.
All right. So item 11I has passed, and I'd now ask for a motion for an emergency as to item 11I. We'll have a motion in a second, please vote. Item 11I is a pass with an emergency.
Thank you.
Now, we've already addressed 11J, is that correct?
Yes, we did.
Where are we going back to now?
Now we'll go back to item N.
Okay. Thank you. We, we now find ourselves at item 11N. For those of you looking, it's at page 15 of your agenda, and this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to speak? Okay.
I wanted to, before we have them speak, I wanted to defer a couple of items, all the, all of the dilapidated structures that are in Ward 7. And, and I'm doing that because I know I'm supposed to be having a meeting about dilapidated structures, so I want to have that meeting before I continue to say yes to these dilapidated structures. So that would be items C, D, E, and G.
Okay. And I think I have to, do I have to do that by separate vote on each one?
No, just one.
No? Okay. All right. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to defer for two weeks, items 11N, C, E, and G.
And D, as in Doc.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. Thank you. We're waiting on a motion. We have it. We have a second, please vote. So those items are deferred.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I think we can now move to item 11N2 was, which is, oh. Michael, do you want to speak to any of these? We, 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 Michael, we just deferred all of the Ward sevens.
Oh, everything?
Yeah.
Oh, everything?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and P too?
Yes.
No, 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 no. P, I knew you had about P.
We just did it off.
We just, we just did C, D, E, and G, sir.
On item N.
N, N1. Okay? All right. So now we can move to N2, and I'll entertain a motion for the resolution declaring the remaining structures are dilapidated. And that, that does need to take into account, we won't be considering the ones that we just previously discussed. The resolution passes. We will now move on to item 11O1, which is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures.
Sir Vice Mayor, on this item, there are a couple that are repeated and dilapidated, which would be I in item K, so I would ask that we defer those as well.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So can we first move to defer for two weeks, item I and K, please? We have a motion in a second. Cast your vote. It passes. We can now, if there's no one signed up to discuss, we can now move to item O2, and I will entertain a resolution declaring the remaining structures as unsecured. Motion second. Item O2 passes. We'll now turn to page 16, item 11P, where we're going to have a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Has anyone signed up for 11P?
Sir Vice Mayor, item E is also, am I dilapidated? So I will ask that we defer that item, please.
Okay. So let's first vote on, let's receive a motion on item 11PE to defer that for two weeks, We have a motion in a second. Item E is deferred. We also have, Michael, do you want to speak to any of these? Okay, thank you so much. We'll move to item 11P2, and that is where I'm asking for a motion as to this resolution to declare the remaining buildings that are abandoned. Please vote. It passes. We'll now move to item 11Q, which is an approval of amendment, amendment number eight to the amended and restated trust indenture, creating the emergency medical services authority as beneficiary of the trust, extending the 2021 window of opportunity from April 1st of this year to November 30th of this year. All right?
Yes. Chief Kelly is going to just give us an update on this. I visited with the council members and explained what we're trying to do, but wanted Chief Kelly to be able to speak to it.
Chief Kelly, good to see you. Glad you're here today. How are you?
I'm, I'm doing very well. Thank you, sir.
Great.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager, obviously it's great to be here, Richard Kelly, Fire Chief. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to amendment eight, which is the amended and restated trust indenture, creating the emergency medical services authority. If you, in the past, the current medical service authority, the IMSA, the trust, provides a window of opportunity every five years. And during this, either beneficiary city, being Oklahoma City or Tulsa, can initiate the process to withdraw from the trust. As you all are aware, amendment number seven was before you in October, and that was a one-month window commencing on October 1st, 2021, and that was extended in amendment seven, ending on April 1st, 2022. The goal of that was to allow the city of Oklahoma City adequate time to consider the authority's plan to improve emergency medical services response times in the city and to see progress towards meeting required response time measures. Today, we're seeking approval of amendment number eight to the trust indenture to extend the 2021 window of opportunity through November 30th, 2022, at which time the council will have an opportunity to determine the best option for our emergency medical services going forward. During this period of time, the IMSA leadership, the city of Oklahoma City Fire Department, the Edmund Fire Department, the Tulsa Fire Department, and the Office of the Medical Director will continue to work together in an effort to try to create the best service plan that we have, and obviously to try to create long-term sustainability for our emergency medical services transport. I, I am happy to report, I believe we have the best working relationship between all organizations within the system that I think we've ever seen. And that's important as we work through these challenging times to have that relationship. So I'm happy to say that we do have a very good relationship working together. It is also important to note that the timeline for this extension of the window of opportunity coincides with the timeline, timelines allowed, and then trust indenture for IMSA to act as the operator. On December 1st, 2022, IMSA will have served as the operator for two years, and that's the maximum timeline that's allowed in the current trust indenture. So this will give, this extension will also give IMSA an opportunity to identify their strategy going forward to provide continued services as that operator. Amendment number eight to the trust indenture does require a trifecta in that the IMSA Board must approve the extension, and that did go before the IMSA Board on March 23rd, and it was approved. And both beneficiary cities must approve, which includes the city of Oklahoma City and the city of Tulsa. Today, you have it before you for approval, and the city of Tulsa is working to put their approval before city council. At this time, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions about this amendment? There being none.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion that we approve this amendment. It passes. And another note, I wish Wiley was here to help us give this presentation, but we hope to see him soon.
Yes.
All right. We'll now go to item 11R, and this is pertaining to grant applications. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor, or in the absence of the mayor, the vice mayor, or at the direction of the mayor or the vice mayor, the city manager to execute grant applications. Does this mean I get to grant some applications today?
It's just making applications for grants.
All right.
Jeff Butler, our Planning Director, will just give us a quick update on what we're trying to do here, just have ourselves positioned to be flexible if we need to, if we have a short timeline on a grant opportunity.
Thank you. Good, good morning. So morning, good morning, council, city manager. So yes, as, as Craig said, we have typically when these, when grants, and this is, this was, this came about in response to the new infrastructure bill, and we've had a lot of talks about how we could best put ourselves in a competitive position to respond to those and acquire those federal funds. But it applies to more than that, it would apply to all grants. For, for years now, and this could apply to federal, state, and other grants, but the policy has been that we go to council to approve even an application for a grant. And the, the issue with that is while it does, you know, allow for transparency, of course, and collaboration and making sure that everybody's aware of what's going on, it does mean that an already short window for grant application is condensed even further. Some of these grants are complicated, they require a lot of interdepartmental collaboration, analysis, research, and just crafting a proposal and sometimes crafting a project. So because of that, this, this, this would allow the mayor, vice mayor, city manager to go ahead and approve an application. The council would, of course, remain the body who would approve the grant itself. Were we to receive a grant or be awarded a grant, the council would approve that grant award as well as, of course, any kind of matching funds that we would, that we would need to provide for that. So it just allows us to be more efficient in response to a multitude of grants. We've had trouble in the past with, most especially the competitive grants, sometimes we're not always aware. Some grants are more predictable than others, some allow us to anticipate, and they're similar to how, how they've been in the past, and so we can anticipate those, but others, not so much. And we sometimes do have trouble getting a competitive application together in time, and sometimes we have to defer till the next year. So this would allow us to be more efficient, more competitive with not only the federal infrastructure grants, but other grants that we sometimes routinely receive that still just don't leave us very much time to put a, a good application together, or at least one that we, we always feel like we can do a better job sometimes if we had a little more time. So happy to take any questions about this item.
I think my one question is, would, once those were, because I really appreciate having them as part of our agenda when they're going to be applied for, just because I think it can sometimes give us a heads up of like, oh, there might be matching funds, or, you know, there's a grant that might help under, you know, improve a certain project. Would they still end up on our agenda, even if they were authorized more through the administrative process, just so that we can still have some kind of awareness that it is being applied
They would certainly.
Well, I'm saying even when, just when they're applied for, because I think having that heads up that something is being applied for, sometimes, in my experience, like, most recently, I would say with the 23rd Streetscape project, knowing that, oh, we're applying for some additional grant funds that might help, you know, improve the project, can, you know, help us as council members communicate to residents that might have questions. I think maybe with the Linwood project, street, street project, they're similar instance. So I think having awareness that something is being applied for is helpful as a council member, just to have a better awareness of where projects might be going before they end up as a, you know, acceptance of the funds, if we do receive it.
There are a few ways we could, we could inform the council.
Yeah, we could have like an informational item on, or we could even do it with city manager reports, I think there's a couple of ways we could look at doing that, that if we've applied for one without coming to council, that we could let you know.
If you want to keep it real simple, you could amend this and have a certificate of service that requires, once a grant application is signed, it's sent to all council.
So.
I think we can manage administratively with how we would, you know, come up with some options for how we can communicate that.
Yeah, I like the idea of it being on the agenda versus just sent to us.
Okay.
So that there is that transparency with the public as well.
And I'll just add that the Uptown project is the exact example, and so I really appreciate that, what you're already, kind of what you're talking about, City Manager.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jeff. Could we entertain a motion at this time as to item R? Cast your votes. It passes. We'll move on now to item 11S1, which is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation of Lieutenant Kevin Bryant. I'd entertain a motion to continue the salary. It passes. We now find ourselves at item T1, which is also a salary continuation resolution for Lieutenant Steve Tennyson. I'd entertain a motion to continue that salary. It passes. We now find ourselves at item 11U, which is a request to enter into executive session to discuss collecting bargaining negotiations for the Fraternal Order of Police, the International Association of Firefighters, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session as to this matter. Have a motion second. It passes. We now find ourselves at page 17, the last page, 11V, which also is another request to enter into executive session as to a lawsuit that we have in the United States District Court for the Western District of Oklahoma, case number CIV 20-1281-G. I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss this case. That passes. We're now at item 11W, claims recommended for approval, and I'd entertain a motion to approve item A through D. It passes. That concludes our voting for the day. We now will hear comments from council, and Bradley?
None today, sir. Thank you.
James?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the Congress for New Urbanism for coming to Oklahoma City. They brought 1,000 attendees from across the world who were in our downtown, they were in our neighborhoods, they were in our historic commercial districts, and as I've already said on social media, to Ward 2 residents, I want, I'm, I just want you to know how proud I am of last week, and how proud I hope Ward 2 residents, who, for the majority of them, said walkability was a priority, I just want you to know that to have this conference here that prioritizes walkability and bike infrastructure and reliable transit and addressing our housing needs and having public parks and public spaces and those things, I just want, I'm so excited about what happened last week, and have a lot of reflection to do. Wednesday night, I got to deliver the keynote welcoming CNU to Oklahoma City, and I did that alongside former Mayor Mick Cornet, who famously put our city on a diet because he realized that walkability was key to our mental and physical health. I also delivered that keynote alongside Walkable Cities author Jeff Speck, who also helped us with Project 180 years ago alongside Mayor Cornet. I, as someone who, this is a priority for me, is making our neighborhoods the sort of better environment for our students. It was such an honor, I'm, I'm still kind of giddy from last week. But I also want to say, something I took away from last week was, you know, during Jeff Speck's keynote, he actually mentioned, called out might be the phrase, one, someone on Twitter, which I don't do Twitter, I can't do that, just, I can't be on there, but someone had actually critiqued the conference for choosing Oklahoma City, and said, I don't understand, it doesn't make sense. And it was the first night that he had, it was the first night they were in town that he'd made that comment, and Jeff called him out during his keynote and said, well, then I guess it's time you learn the history of Oklahoma City and see what our progress has been for the last 25 years. And do you know what? I ran into that individual by the end of the week, I had taken some of the conference attendees out, we actually went to Engels, and there's several things I want to say about that. One, I had someone with me that night from Boston, grew up in Mexico, lives and works in Boston, he was in awe of the placemaking project on 39th Street, could not believe we were doing something like that. It was the envy, they, they were just like, wow, what is Oklahoma City doing? This is a beautiful project you all are doing here. It was jealousy, it was, it was kind of cool. Then when we went in Engels, which was just packed and looked like it must have in 1982, best technology, lighting, sound system, he just stood on the second floor and looked out, all these, the diverse crowd, Hispanic Latinx, Asian, people with cowboy hats on, black folk, you name it, everyone was there, and he goes, we don't have this in Boston. We don't have this in Boston, but we do in Oklahoma City. And that is a 40-year-old institution, Engels is, it's celebrating its 40-year anniversary this year, and we know its history with police brutality back in those days, but it sustained with that, it worked with the city to address that, and now, all these years later, people from around the world were in that club in awe of who we are and the diversity that is this city. And the other thing they said was while they were proud of downtown, they were so happy they left downtown and went into our neighborhoods. They said, that's it, it's like your neighborhoods are really where the magic is, and that was really, really wonderful to hear. And I'll conclude by then saying that I got to co-host a tour of the Paseo and take dozens of people into the Paseo. They met everyone from humankind, architects, chefs, they met artists, they met, like Ebony Mondoales, they met people at Paseo Pottery, Amanda Bleakley, Kim Cooperhart, thank you so much with the City of OKC for talking about how we invest in our historic commercial districts. This crowd was, I talked about nerding out earlier, they were nerding out, they had questions, and again, they were like, every time Kim spoke, they were like, how did you do this? But how did you all figure out that? How did you figure out this funding source? And Kim was like a champion with just all these, just like, well, here's some of the state statutes we had to deal with, but I know in this other city, here's what they're doing. I mean, y'all, it was impressive, it was impressive. And you have Paul Mays from 612 talking about his first do-it-yourself bioswell rain garden, and how that's going to be a part of a larger conversation with what the city's doing. They were just in awe of who we are, but there's a lesson to the story, and it goes back to that guy who called out the conference on Twitter, and I think the lesson is that by the end of the week, I ran into that guy at Engels. And he came over to me and he said, James, I was wrong. I was right and I was wrong. It is always good to be open to critique, and that's something I would challenge all of us who, yes, we've made a lot of accomplishments in Oklahoma City in the last 25 years, but we cannot rest on our laurels, and we also must be open to constructive criticism on how we move forward, and that's what I took away from the conference, where people saying, your magic is in your districts, your magic is in your city, thank God your downtown is coming back to life, now let's work together to hear ideas, exchange ideas on how we can move, move forward in this sort of way. So I just really wanted to brag on our accomplishments, challenge us to always be open to those criticisms, and just say thank you to CNU for a very successful conference, and to the local host committee, hats off to everyone who made last week happen. So, thank you.
Barbara?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple things this morning, so congratulations to the Mustang basketball team on earning the 2022 6A Boys Basketball Academic State Championship, so we're very proud of the academic achievements of our basketball players in Mustang, and so we want to acknowledge their accomplishments today, both on and off the court. Also like to take an opportunity to close out Women's History Month, just with another appreciation for all of the city employees that showed up this morning for our picture on the steps, both the executives as well as the police officers, and it was a great turnout, it was, it was very cool, very cool to see. And then the last thing, the National Association of Women in Construction will be hosting, the Oklahoma City chapter is hosting our South Central Region Forum on April 8th and 9th at the Downtown Sheridan, so we look forward to bringing in women in construction to Oklahoma City. I'll be doing the introduction to Oklahoma City at that forum, so I'm very excited to bring them in and hopefully get some of them to relocate up here and go to work for all of our amazing general contractors. So that's all I've got this morning. Thank you.
Todd?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to announce that on Thursday, April 14th, at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a Turnpike Town Hall, should be interesting. It'll be at The Rock Church, which is at 6801 South Anderson Road, basically the northwest corner of Anderson and I-240. And this meeting isn't, there isn't going to be anyone there to protest to. It's really, it's going to be an informational meeting, so that people can figure out what it is they need to do in order to protest, or, you know, if it does happen, what kind of actions they need to take to make sure they're whole. So, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Joe Beth?
Yes, I just had one item. I was contacted by a defense lawyer I know yesterday that, and this is, I just want to get some more information from the city manager, and thought maybe the rest of council might be interested, but I was informed by them that our chief of police sent out an amended misdemeanor sentencing memo yesterday that essentially sounds like it will send a lot of things that have previously been charged at the municipal level to now be referred to the state for state charges, so at the, in the county courts, and I'm concerned about this because I just found out we had another jail death overnight, so that'll be the fifth jail death, and it's only, April is on Friday, so less than four months of the year, and five people in our jail have died, and I'm concerned that sending some of these charges to the county level are going to keep more people in the jail, and that seems to be sort of at odds with everything that I've heard publicly stated by all of the groups working to lower the population of the jail, so I'd just like some more information on that from the city manager's office, and just figure out what we can do to ensure that folks can have those processes expedited so that they aren't sitting in the jail.
Okay, we will get, we'll get an update on that. I know we've been working with the county judges to, the state, the district judges to make sure that we have a process to get those processed quickly, but then also working with the diversion program, so it gives people opportunities to get plugged in, particularly where there's multiple offenses that have occurred, that they can get plugged into diversion services, but we'll get you an update on that.
Nikki?
I have a couple things. First, I do want to, as we look at the conversation we had to have earlier with the housing authority, I would like for us to, I would like for an audit to be done on, on, on the housing authority and what they're, as far as what they're doing, especially with the lens of the fact that I am understanding and received information from our daily living center that's housed in the jail to Maguire Plaza, that they are no longer able to financially be a part of that particular facility, and that our housing authority is not willing to help them subsidize for programming in that same place, so that is very disturbing for me, especially for our seniors to not have that type of, of, of programming for that. And one of the things I didn't mention in the consent documents, I'll mention it now, was an art commission that's going to be happening in Capital View for the community space at Northeast 29th and Laird and at McNabb Park, and one of the things that we do know is that our strong neighborhood initiative is right now in the Capital View community, so this was something that the neighbors wanted, they want to be a butterfly sanctuary, so this particular piece of art that they are putting in both of these places is meant to attract and to provide beautification as far as those butterflies are concerned. So I know this is something that the neighbors all agreed on, and this is what they wanted as far as to beautify these particular spaces, so I am happy that we are getting to that area where they will see a lot of the things that they have wanted come into fruition, although we still have an issue right now sitting with our Oklahoma City Public Schools building that the same SNI community would like to have and create a public park, a neighborhood park, and we keep getting the runaround from OKCPS when this building has been dormant for numerous years with no activity, so that's very disappointing that they are unwilling to help us accommodate our neighbors in that way. I do want to mention District 5 OKCPS Forum, it is happening tonight, and this will be a question that we're going to ask those candidates tonight about what they would like to do and how they can help as far as those, those buildings that they have that are under OKCPS, so this is a forum that I'll be hosting along with the Urban League, and it's going to be a virtual forum at 6:30. And I also wanted to comment on the CNU and thank our local host committee for two things. One, for the way that they oversaw our city and how they, they poured all of their, their love of the city and the resources that they had to make sure that our residents that were visiting came in and had a good time, and I also thank them for the Legacy Project, and for those, I'm not sure if I mentioned it before, but the Legacy Project was two projects chosen for them to look at how we can repurpose or just them lend their resources. They chose one out of Tulsa, and the other project that they chose was the Jewel Theater, so we're excited that they came, we were able to present on the Jewel Theater and its importance of that building being created in 1931, and now we're, we're getting more synergy of being able to repurpose and preserve that space, so we're all very excited about what CNU was able to bring. So 1,000 eyes. So a thousand eyes from all across the world to see Northeast Oklahoma City and to do tours, to the tours that James was talking about. We also did quite a few tours in Northeast Oklahoma City for people to see the development of East Point, to see other development, other developments that have occurred and taken place. So to the point of that, we are doing something right because a lot of the folks that did see that said, we don't have these things. And I think that was, that was pretty interesting to hear, the comparison of other, other cities and them being so dominant in the work that they do, that they were recognizing the fact that there were still things that they did not have, that Oklahoma City did. So we are doing something right, that's for sure. My last thing is, there's an MLK remembrance celebration that's in program that's going to take place on April the 4th. So I do want to put that on everyone's radar. It's going to take place at the, at the Capitol, and that's normally where it is every year, scholarships, there's a scholarship contest and those announcers, those winners will be announced, excuse me. And there's a tree that had been planted there many, many years ago, so that's why we go to the Capitol to have that celebration. So looking forward to April the 4th. Thank you.
Just briefly, in Ward Eight on last Sunday, I wanted to thank Dr. Tom Vineyard, he's the pastor of Higher Plains Baptist Church. He invited me to attend a ceremony backing police officers called Back the Badge. It honored Oklahoma City County, Oklahoma City Police Officers, Oklahoma County Sheriff's Officers, and Oklahoma Highway Patrol Officers, and it was a really meaningful ceremony. And there were officers that received wards for going beyond the call of duty, showing great courage, great passion for the job that they do. I have never been prouder of our chief, Chief Gorley, who got up and spoke and did a tremendous job at that service and emphasized how we need to comment on, support, and help our police officers. I'd also like to thank County Sheriff Tommy Johnson, who did a great job at that. And with that, I think we're through with comments from council, and we're now ready for citizens to be heard. And we will start with Joy. You ready, Joy?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Move it, if I can hear. I did want to say, I have several things on my list, but one of the things most people in the ADA community doesn't know now, but when I first started coming to the city council meetings with my chair and everything, y'all have, the gallery has changed. Before, I wouldn't be able to get down the side, now I can. Hey, thank you. Most people that watch don't know that. It makes it that much, even the center aisle is much more ADA friendly. Thank you. The one thing I brought to some people's attention is the signs, the portable signs. Several businesses like to put them in the middle of the sidewalk. Is there any way we can start talking to these businesses about not doing that? Joe Beth, I sent you, they're still doing it. That garage is, I'll let you deal with that. The hotel are still blocking the, several hotels down, one on Broadway, and then down in Bricktown, they're still blocking the sidewalks and the curb cutouts. And I have tried to work with them and they still do it. And another thing is the boundaries for businesses. What I mean is like the garage not far from here, they've got an overhang, they've got like a two or three-foot overhang, but it intrudes into the, the actual tectile for the sidewalk. Is there any way that we can kind of, because I also talked to the code enforcement and they said that it would be up to y'all to do something about it. So I'm bringing it to the city council for this. And the scooters, you know my sore subject on the scooters. People just don't care, they're, they're leaving them. I had an incident with three homeless people down at Robinson and Park. I moved them out of the, out of the curb cutout and everything, and they wanted to fight me over them. What, they said I should leave them alone. The whole deal is, I moved them over out of the, where they're supposed to park them at the curb, not in the curb cutout, not blocking the, the buttons so we could get to the crossing, not blocking, not blocking hydrants. That's all I had. Thank you.
Joy, thanks for coming today, we appreciate you. Y'all have a wonderful day.
You too.
Next up, we have Mr. Michael Washington.
Thank you, thank you, we're getting ready to come to conclusion here. Ms., Joe Beth, you brought up an interesting point there regarding the need and you people getting more involved in that county jail situation. Let me, let me let all y'all know, some of us know the history of the city. Those inmates are simply on loan from your allowing a contract with the county, okay? We understand that, right? So that means simply because they're on loan and a contract to house them in their facility, that means y'all still responsible how your citizens are being treated by county officials, doesn't it? So again, that's what I said, we need to start looking a little bit closer, I'm glad you brought five deaths already, and repeatedly the deaths have been on and on and on, bedbugs, putrid food, I'll call it that, that's what it is, filthy, jail cells not even being cleaned out, mold on the food trays still yet, people saying they're not getting out of their cells. Man, I mean, what is it going to take for common, everyday folks to see, yes, you may be accused of committing a crime, but I was all my, it's been my thoughts that the judge is supposed to sentence you after the case is brought before them. You hear me? But no, it's not happening that way. All right? When the county officials do wrong, you run the city. Regardless whether they're on loan to those people in there to house because y'all killed the county, Oklahoma City Jail no longer exists, we had to put them somewhere, all right, county jail, y'all don't own, but any wrongdoing you're supposed to investigate yourselves independent of their actions. We know that. Isn't that not a part of the ordinance that goes on? The county is still, you're the city. We're not talking about a county, we're talking about the city of Oklahoma City. See? County is just a little bit of space. Everything comes through you. So regardless of what those people are doing, y'all need to have an independent investigation conducted into the activities that's going on in there, because those people are not intensely protecting the rights of citizens who do not know that there's, that y'all supposed to exist here. They're in the jails, shot in there, laying around, can't do anything, killings going on, there's a pocket of, listen to me, y'all, I'm getting ready to close, there is a pocket of county officials in there that's allowing those deaths to go on. That's right. I may be stretching it a bit, because I'm not in there, I can't see everything going, but I tell you what, that many deaths, they don't have that in the most worst prison settings in the world. Really? Thirty seconds, right? I got you, see, I'll catch you down. But now, we do need y'all to get in here, let's, let's get to the trenches, because Michael Washington is going to continue to fight for the rights of the citizen regardless, and I'm not being paid for it, and every last Saturday of every month, I'll be out here, I don't care if I'm going to be by myself, we're going to have fun. So let's investigate them people, let's file lawsuits on them people, because y'all can even do that. Thank y'all, and I'll be back.
Thank you. We will now go into recess for executive session. I'll need five of you to come back out so we can end the meeting. Thank you.[1142.21]
...